Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's public hearing and public meeting of Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance, and I'll ask our general counsel, Mark Silbermann, to call the roll.
Chair Carroll?
Here.
Vice Chair Bland. Mr. Chapin. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chu.
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg. Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
Commissioner Master.
Here.
All right. Thank you. And just noting for the record, Commissioner Chen is participating via Zoom this morning. We have a number of items on the agenda today. We are starting with a public meeting item, which is an item proposed for calendaring by the Research Department. And then we'll be moving to the Preservation Department public meeting agenda where we have one application that has already had a public hearing and is back today with revisions in response to our comments. And then we'll move to our public hearing agenda to review new applications for work on designated properties. And with that, I will turn it over to Margaret Herman, our Director of Research.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item number one is LP 2692, the Beverly Square West Historic District in Brooklyn. The item proposed for the Commission's calendar is the proposed Beverly Square West Historic District, consisting of properties located between Argyle and Marlborough Roads, between Beverly Road and Cortelia Road, as described in the agenda. Item number two is LP 2693, Dittmas Park West Historic District in Brooklyn. The item proposed for the Commission's calendar is the proposed Dittmas Park West Historic District, consisting of the properties located between Westminster and Marlborough Roads, between Dorchester Road and Dittmas Avenue, as described in the agenda. And presenting both items is Michael Karatsis.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Michael Karatsis of the Research Department, presenting the proposed Beverly Square West and Dittmas Park West Historic Districts, two well-preserved districts of freestanding houses built between the mid-1890s and 1910 in the historic suburban section of Flatbush, Brooklyn. The proposed Beverly Square West Historic District contains 119 houses along Beverly, Argyle, Rugby and Marlborough Roads, bounded by Beverly Road on the north and Cortelia Road on the south. The proposed Dittmas Park West Historic District is located one block south of Beverly Square West. It contains 128 houses along Westminster, Argyle, Rugby and Marlborough Roads, as well as on Dittmas Avenue. It is bounded by Dorchester Road on the north and Dittmas Avenue on the south. Both Beverly Square West and Dittmas Park West are located in historic suburban Flatbush, an expansive area of turn-of-the-20th-century freestanding houses extending Southwood from Prospect Park toward Brooklyn College. Although this area is often called Victorian Flatbush, most of its development occurred after the Victorian era ended in 1901. The dashed black line shows the general boundary of historic suburban Flatbush. Within this area, LPC has designated three districts of historic freestanding houses: Prospect Park South, designated in 1979; Dittmas Park, designated in 1981; and Fisk Terrace Midwood Park, designated in 2008. LPC has also completed multiple surveys of this area since 2006. Based on these surveys, the Research Department believes Beverly Square West and Dittmas Park West to be the strongest areas of historic suburban Flatbush not already designated. In both areas, the majority of houses shown here in dark green have been rated as having high integrity, meaning that they substantially retain their historic ornament and other details. The houses shown in light green have experienced minor alterations but retain their historic form. Eighty-five percent of houses in both districts fall within these top-two-integrity categories. The boundaries of both proposed districts have been drawn to contain their most intact areas. Flatbush's suburban development began when it was still an independent town, before its 1894 annexation by Brooklyn and Brooklyn's absorption into New York City in 1898. The suburbanization was made possible by the opening of the Brooklyn-Flatbush and Coney Island Railroad along the eastern boundary of the proposed districts in 1878, and its extension as the Brighton Railroad to the Brooklyn Bridge in 1896 and over the bridge toward Manhattan around 1900. This line is now the B&amp;Q lines of the New York City subway. The neighborhood's pioneering suburban development was the cleverly-named Tennis Court, started in 1886 and later demolished and replaced with apartment houses. The influential Prospect Park South development, now Historic District, was begun in 1899. Five years before Prospect Park South was begun in 1894, local builders began constructing houses within the northern portion of the proposed Beverly Square West Historic District. At the time, this area was named Matthews Park after the land's previous owner. In a 1901 feature on Brooklyn's beautiful suburbs, one newspaper stated that, quote, "Of all the building tracts into which historic Flatbush is now divided, none are more beautiful than Matthews Park. Four or five years ago, the land was covered with waving rows of corn, but now it is a remarkably attractive settlement," unquote. Among its earliest houses was the Queen Anne Style House at 268 Argyle Road, designed by John A. Davidson in 1895. As shown on this 1899 map, the southern portion of the proposed district was a separate parcel of land that remained undeveloped for several years after construction began in Matthews Park. This parcel, known as the Catherine Lot or Voorhees Farm, was bought by developer Thomas B. Ackerson in 1901. The view above, looking northwest from the intersection of Marlborough and Cortelia Roads, was taken around the time that Ackerson acquired the property, showing the houses of Matthews Park in the distance and the as-of-yet-undeveloped Ackerson property in the foreground. Ackerson soon began improving the land and building houses there. The company named the development Beverly Square West to correspond to its Beverly Square East development east of the Brighton Line Railroad tracks. It employed an experienced team of Brooklyn architects, including A. White Pierce, to design its houses, which were completed by 1905. Ultimately, the Beverly Square West name would come to encompass the entire area, including the section formerly known as Matthews Park. In 1902, Ackerson had the names of East 13th, 14th, and 15th Streets changed to Argyle, Rugby, and Marlborough Roads to conform with the Prospect Park South development to the north. Most of the earliest houses of the proposed district located in its northern Matthews Park section were completed in the Queen Anne style, which evoked the cottage architecture of the Elizabethan era. Queen Anne-style houses are generally asymmetric in form with picturesque massing and steeply-pitched roof lines pierced by towers and gables. 1304 Beverly Road, built in 1898, is unusual for Beverly Square West in combining Queen Anne-style massing with extensive Tudor revival detailing. Around 1900, the colonial revival style became increasingly popular in suburban Flatbush and within the proposed district. In contrast to the Queen Anne, colonial revival houses adhered more closely to the symmetry of the Georgian and Federal periods, incorporating features such as Tuscan or Ionic columns and Palladian windows and fanlights, as shown on 225 and 243 Argyle Road. Many houses during this time incorporated features of both styles, such as 243 Argyle Road, which combines the massing and decorative elements of the Queen Anne style with a colonial-style porch. These houses are all in the northern Matthews Park section of Beverly Square West. Ackerson's houses in the southern portion of the proposed district generally drew upon the same styles, often freely combining them in the same house. 329 Rugby Road and 316 Marlborough Road merged Queen Anne-style massing with colonial revival classicism and pattern shingles typical of the shingle style. 340 Marlborough Road is an impressive Tudor revival-style house with characteristic Tudor half-timbering. Though diverse in style and design, the houses of Beverly Square West form harmonious suburban streetscapes little changed from the early 20th century. Houses are set behind open lawns forming a continuous belt of greenery. The original landscape plan remains generally intact with grass strips separating the sidewalk from the street. This section of Marlborough Road includes Thomas B. Ackerson's personal residence at left, featuring an impressive two-story colonial-inspired porch. These two maps show the proposed district almost entirely completed by 1905. The building dates map shows its earliest houses, the darkest in color, built between 1894 and 1899, in the northern Matthews Park section of the proposed district, and almost all of the remaining construction in the eastern section of Matthews Park and on the Ackerson property to the south, occurring between 1900 and 1905. All but five of the houses within the proposed district were completed by 1905, with the remaining few built by 1910. This rapid period of development gives Beverly Square West remarkable architectural cohesiveness. As was typical of suburban Flatbush developments, all Beverly Square West's homeowners during its early years were white professionals. Among them were the Jennings family, who lived at 323 Rugby Road in 1910 with Fanny Reeves, a widowed African-American woman born in Virginia who worked as their servant. During the Depression, many homeowners took in lodgers, such as Mr. B. Spalding, who lived at 293 Rugby Road, with three unrelated lodgers in 1940. The proposed Dittmas Park West Historic District is located one block south of the southern boundary of Beverly Square West. It is just west of the existing Dittmas Park Historic District, which is partially shown enclosed by the blue line. The space in between the two is the Brighton subway line. Dittmas Park West was a project of Lewis H. Pounds and his Manor Realty Company. In 1902, Pounds purchased the former John Dittmas farm, which had been farmed using the labor of enslaved people into the 19th century. The property was bisected by the Brighton Railroad, extending from Coney Island Avenue on the west to Ocean Avenue on the east. Soon after acquiring it, Pounds began developing the portion east of the railroad line as an exclusive suburb called Dittmas Park. In 1903, he began improving the land west of the railroad as a separate suburb, Dittmas Park West. Pounds' primary role as the developer of Dittmas Park West was in improving the land, installing infrastructure, laying out streets, and marketing the development. In November of 1903, Pounds sold many of its lots to local builders to develop themselves. Unlike Dittmas Park, which was marketed to the elite, Dittmas Park West, as this advertisement notes, was intended to fill the need for, quote, "dwellings of moderate cost in a select neighborhood and with good permanent street improvements." "We are putting in all improvements on this property, and it is rapidly changing in appearance from farm to city," the ad stated. Builders rushed to construct houses in Dittmas Park West. As in Beverly Square West, Dittmas Park West possesses strong architectural and historical cohesiveness due to its rapid development and uniform building type of freestanding houses. Dittmas Park West developed even more quickly than Beverly Square West, with all of its houses constructed between 1903 and 1910. The Queen Anne style was also popular in Dittmas Park West. While primarily Queen Anne in style, all of these houses incorporate colonial-style porches, as well as unconventional colonial-style ornament at the second story of 461 Westminster Road. Houses that are more decidedly colonial in style include 470 Westminster Road, which features a prominent Palladian window. 476 Westminster Road and 516 Rugby Road combined colonial-style ornament with the boxy forms and deep overhangs of the then-emerging Prairie style, which was influenced by the work of Frank Lloyd Wright. Shingle-style influences were also popular in Dittmas Park West. Originating in the late 1870s in Gilded Age resort areas such as Newport and the Berkshires, the shingle-style emphasized form and shingled surface over expressive ornament. Characteristic shingle-style features include the curving forms and projecting gable within a gable of 499 Rugby Road, the gambrel gable and shingled window hoods of 455 Westminster Road, and the dominant second-story side gable of 457 Rugby Road. The early demographics of Dittmas Park West were similar to those of Beverly Square West. In 1910, 523 Rugby Road on the corner of Dittmas Avenue was the home of Harry Gratton, who developed both sides of Rugby Road within the proposed district after buying the property from Lewis Pounds. His family lived here with Mandy Halen, a 30-year-old Finnish immigrant, who worked as their servant. By 1950, many houses were used as two-family homes, including 496 Argyle Road, which was occupied by two small unrelated families in 1950. Today, the historic landscape features of Dittmas Park West remain largely intact, contributing to its lush suburban feel. Front lawns remain continuous and open in front of houses dating from the first decade of the 20th century. Although both Dittmas Park West and Beverly Square West were impacted by Brooklyn's population losses of the 1960s and 70s and the expansion of suburbanization outside New York City, both neighborhoods benefited from the renewed interest in historic neighborhoods that came with Brooklyn's brownstone revival of the 1970s. Walking and house tours started by the 1980s were crucial in increasing awareness of these neighborhoods' rich architectural history. Both districts' historic streetscapes of freestanding houses continue to appear much as they did in the early 20th century. The Research Department recommends that the Commission vote to calendar these two areas for consideration as New York City Historic Districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Commissioners, do we have any questions on these two items? Yes, Commissioner Goldblum?
You noted in the Dittmas Park West description that the lawns were contiguous. At the same condition in Beverly Square? I mean, I'm thinking of districts in Queens where we have fence issues?
Yes, the lawns, the front lawns generally remain unfenced and open, as well as the strips. Both districts have planted strips between the sidewalks and the street. Make sure that that's noted in both cases.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? All right. Well, I think this is, in general, if Victorian Flatbush is a neighborhood that the Commission has designated Historic Districts over many decades now, and these two proposed Historic Districts would continue the story and history of the development of the neighborhood. So I would recommend that we vote to calendar today. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to calendar Beverly Square West? The proposed Beverly Square West Historic District?
Motion.
Thank you. No, we don't have to read anything. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item is calendared. And Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to calendar the proposed Dittmas Park West Historic District?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's wonderful. So both proposed Historic Districts are now currently on the Commission's calendar, and we will schedule a public hearing in due time and move ahead with these proposals. All right. So thank you, Michael. Thank you, Margaret, for your hard work on these proposals. And we'll now move to the Preservation Department's public meeting agenda, and I'll turn it over to Director of Preservation Cory Harala.
Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. Start today's Preservation Department agenda with public meeting item number one, LPC 25-10966, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1382, Lot 7502, 809 Madison Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by F.B. and A. Ware, and built in 1924 to 25. The application is to construct additions, modify and create window openings, and replace windows. This was last presented at the public hearing of June 10th, 2025, and no action was taken at that time. The applicants will present their revisions to the proposal after we open the proceedings.
All right, we'll do that right now. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the applicants may begin.
Makes for an appropriate proposal, but a better design, thanks to your comments. Your comments were with regard to three broad areas: the window modifications, the penthouse bulk, and the treatment on the east elevation where we have a lateral extension, and specifically to a loggia proposed there. So generally, the window proposal included broadening, widening, existing six-over-six windows to match existing eight-over-eight windows on the facade. Those have been scaled back and will be retained in their existing configuration, and also providing for a uniform treatment in the windows in the enlarged bays at the center of the facade. In terms of the penthouse bulk, the proposal comments related to the bulk and height and relationship to the historic building. So we have reconfigured the existing mechanical bulkhead, reducing that by two feet overall. The existing floor level, or the proposed floor level of the penthouse, the second floor of the penthouse, has been reduced to 11 foot 6 from 12, so an overall height reduction by two and a half feet. And this is in combination with a series of design changes, reducing parapets, introducing railings to allow for the perceived height and proportion of the addition to be more consistent with the overall building, but also just ground it, give it a sense of gravity, and relate better to the building itself. And then finally, the east loggia. We've removed the loggia. This was at the connection between the addition and the historic building. Removed that. There was concern that it drew too much attention to itself. That is gone, and all of the terracotta cornice and string course will be preserved. So, looking at those in detail. The window revisions first. On the left was the previously proposed condition, and on the right is the current proposal. Can see the outside bays to the north and south were proposed to be widened. In the proposed condition, they will be maintained, so it gives you a much better solid-to-void ratio. We had a separate treatment for the transitional floors here at 3 and 11. You can see they had one single opening with a ganged window within, rather than the tripartite, three separate openings within the body of the facade. That has all been compressed into a single opening, so we have a uniform treatment, again, allowing for more of that sort of brick-to-window ratio along that elevation. We'll talk about the reduction at the penthouse and the design modifications separately, but here you can see the overall just compression of the additions in elevation. On the north elevation at East 68th Street, again, we had that widened expression. I think Commissioner Chu was particularly concerned about the change from the smaller window to the larger window above that in the shaft of the building. So that has all been regularized in that eastmost bay there. Moving to the penthouse. The overall mechanical enclosure has been reduced, as I said, by two feet. The top floor of the penthouse reduced by six inches. This gives you that two-and-a-half-foot reduction. Here is the mechanical enclosure. In order to accommodate all of the equipment, we had to expand it a little bit to the east by three feet. This is over the secondary facade to the east from Park Avenue, and we can look at that in detail, but you can see here, this is solidly-packed equipment. We have two tiers of equipment. There's a catwalk that divides each of the areas to the east and west of the core, and has been fully condensed into that footprint and to the height. And also, just to show you what's required in terms of the elevator overrun and mechanical clearances, the vast majority of this equipment would be required under any rehabilitation of the building. Even if we didn't have proposed expansions, it would still be the same equipment generator requirements for a fully electric building with a central plant. In plan, this is how it works out, so you can see that in the previous proposals on the top, current proposals on the bottom, had to jog three and a half feet to the east, but still keeping it set back behind the parapet, so it reads as a separate layer within the defined definition of the design, and then all of that dropping down. The whole core kind of shifted to the east. In terms of design, you can see a few changes. We'll talk about the sort of central pavilion of the mechanical enclosure. That was narrowed to try to center it and give it more sort of horizontal reading to the overall massing, and again, compress the design. So it steps down slightly to the east. This is the Madison end west. This is the Madison side of the building. We've removed the brick parapet here, just to reduce the visual bulk of the building. Now has a railing at the parapet, and we've cut that down. It has a projecting cornice line at the top of the occupied floor, so that it gives a more proper termination to that and then differentiates from the floor above, which is the mechanical, and then introducing a string course between penthouse level one and two to really give that reinforced horizontal reading of the overall composition. On the east side of the building, previous proposed on the left, current proposal on the right, with the loggia removed. We've also cut down the parapet, reduced that down to the bare minimum, and then introduced a glass and metal railing to allow for more transparency of the historic facade beyond. So this is the east wing extension, and the historic building ends here, and this is extension to the south, and the penthouse is above. So preserving the existing historic cornice, you get much more legibility of that from the east now, and the terracotta string course will not be cut into. All the windows will sit above it. That terracotta string course acts as a sill course along the 12th floor, and so that relationship will be maintained there. And then in the addition, a new door that provides access to the terrace on the roof of the east wing. Looking at that from the backside, here's the previously proposed loggia that's been removed. The plane of the addition is set back slightly from the plane of the historic facade. That's about a four-inch return. This allows the return of the terracotta cornice to remain, because this is the end of the historic building right here, and as would the return of the terracotta string course. We see that from the east here, so significant improvements in terms of the relationship of that east wing to the historic building. You now have more transparency to the facade beyond, the clear reading of the cornice extending back and projecting over the facade. And then up at the penthouse levels and the mechanical enclosure, you can see that sort of visual compression, the overall height reduction, but also the design interventions that have helped that read as more compressed and grounded in the building itself. From the north along Madison, this is sort of the critical view that we all focused on. We have reduced the pavilion to a single bay. This aligns with, even though perspective is playing tricks on us, this aligns with the pediment of the cornice, so it carries that same width up and centers it and gives you the reading that we see in the historic rendering of the original architect's intent. And then, again, the overall height reduction, removing the brick parapet at the 14th floor, and the sort of horizontal reading of the overall composition. From the south, that same view, really just looking at the overall reduction in height here. And then the view from directly across Madison. You could see the window modifications bringing the proposed condition much more consistent with the historic. with the historic building itself, but also decreasing the, or increasing the solid-to-void ratio. And then at the penthouse, we're reading the penthouse beyond the pediment of the historic crown, and then just a sliver of the mechanical enclosure above, so greatly reducing the effect or sightline from Madison Avenue, this sort of all-important view. We are very pleased with the redesign. We hope you are too, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have questions, commissioners, on this? All right. That's, there we go. I think we'll leave it on the rendering. All right, so if there are no questions, I think we can move to our discussion. And I want to just start out by saying that when we saw this last week, there was overwhelming support for this project, both from the public and around this table, or these tables. You know, recognizing that the building has been vacant for two years, and it has had some alterations which are being reversed at the base in, as part of this, returning this building to use. And so I think everybody was really supportive of the kind of revitalization of this building, returning it to use, and recognizing that returning it to use today would require some change. And we thought about it a little bit like we think about an adaptive reuse and the flexibility needed for that. We also, I think, all acknowledged the original building drawings, which had a designed penthouse, which was sort of reduced and simplified during construction. But I think recognizing that the original design intent did include a designed visible addition that particularly played off of that central bay on the 68th Street facade, and acknowledged that the new design was related to that design intent. And so, as Erin said, many commissioners supported it as is, and many other commissioners did ask for some, really what I think were tweaks and refinements, and those centered around the height of the penthouse and the sort of simplifying the widened and new window openings to relate to the simplicity of the building, and also reducing the number of window openings that were to be widened. And so the applicants, and in fact even recommended this single opening at the center of the Madison Avenue facade. So the applicants have responded with doing the single opening all the way up and maintaining the width of the openings on either side and around the corner in that bay that aligns with windows at the top and at the base that were not going to be widened. And that simplified that line. And then in terms of the visibility, they have reduced it to the extent that they can, given the amount of mechanical equipment they need. I think even on the penthouse floors, they need to have mechanical equipment in the ceiling. So they've taken it off where they can, but it does, because of the mechanical needs, it does mean adding three feet to the back, but that is a secondary facade, and I think they prioritize this three-quarter view, which is, you know, seeing it over the two primary facades, where the penthouse really does now nestle down behind the decorative parapet. So I think they've been very responsive, but we'll have a discussion here, and we'll see where we come out. Yeah?
I do have a question for Erin. I didn't quite understand the increase of footprint to the east on the penthouse. That was the increase in plan?
They had to relocate the equipment that had been previously, let's see.
Yes, thanks.
And in order to bring the height down, the units that had been previously stacked over here had to be located and extended. And then once you put the, so it required the extension to the east, and then with the required clearances, because they can't, there's not a mechanical engineer, perhaps Hernan can address this, but they can't have the return and the air handlers.
Hernan, just come up and speak into the microphone and just state your name.
We need to keep a certain, Hernan Cheval from Robertson Architects. So we need to have certain clearances between, say, cooling towers and hanging units, and as well. So what we did is, we had to rejigger the equipment, and we did move even the elevator core, send three feet six to the right, to the east, so that we could maintain the two-foot reduction on the height. It's just, all the equipment didn't really fit in the existing.
Understood. So basically, to save the two and a half feet of height, we're accepting a two, some two-foot increase in plan?
Yes. One thing I want to highlight, though, is that if you look at the extension of object in elevation, you would see that we are reducing, let's say, 60 feet of length on the north side by two feet, 120 square feet in elevation. And what we are extending to the east would be three feet six by 63 square feet in elevation. So we have a net reduction of the bulkhead in elevation. We did try to compress it as much as we could.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lutfi? So if you could have taken the height from somewhere else, could you have solved this problem? So for example, in the penthouses in its current form that you're presenting today, how high is that level?
The floor is 11 six, floor to floor, out of which we have to take a foot approximately for insulation, and.
It's 11 six. It was, I thought it was 16? No? That was the mechanical. Yeah, so you have a foot of insulation, and then, did you also have mechanical equipment in there? I seem to recall you saying that.
The floor, when I need to move all the ducts from the smaller footprint of the mechanical bulkhead into where they need to be as they go down the building. So we're trying to do it really in flat ducts, kind of, they call it pancake ducts. And I think we're trying to keep on certain locations, maybe nine clear on secondary rooms, maybe eight-six, and on primary rooms, we may be up to 10 feet, if we really try hard to keep everything as is on the living room. I mean, we know that bathrooms, kitchens, bedrooms will be lower, because that's where we do our distribution.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
So your floor, your floor structure is one foot, correct?
Yeah.
In the penthouse?
Yeah.
So you have a 10-foot ceiling height. From floor to bottom of structure is 10 feet.
Correct, yeah.
So that's the issue. That's where you, if you made it nine feet, we'd get another foot, but you made it 10.
But if I.
So it's the ceiling height for the penthouse that's causing your height, right?
That is true, but if I have, let's say, nine foot on the living room, where I have no ducts, the locations where I do have the ducts, such as the kitchen and bathrooms, will be closer to eight. Because I will need to have, let's say, a duct will be 12 to 18 inches. So in addition to, if I have a 10 clear on, under a slab, minus 18, I'm down to eight-six. Plus, I need to run, assuming that I don't have any crossovers, that'll be eight-six, I may have to run fire sprinklers or other pipes, gets tricky.
Yeah. I don't mind the ceiling height, 10 feet is fine. I was trying to figure out how you could lower the height of the whole structure, that whole penthouse, and I couldn't see how you could do it. I didn't see how it was possible, unless you see the apartment floor at a ceiling height, you know, the other way.
Just on that same topic, what is floor to floor below, the typical floor?
It's 12 floor to floor, and that will, oh, on the kitchen is.
I didn't see it in the drawings.
I think on the top floor, it was 10, what's that? 10 on the top, yeah. And 10 on the floor, and nine-six on the lower levels.
That's floor to floor?
That's, that's clear. Floor to ceiling, not counting the beams. The beams will go, will down.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. All right, so we've just discussed again a little bit more about the reduction in the height of the penthouse floors, as well as the mechanical equipment, and just noting again that there are design changes that have been introduced to emphasize the sort of horizontality of it and kind of ground it into the building, and the loggia has been eliminated from the east elevation. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, the last time we saw this, you supported it as it was presented, but with the changes that were suggested by other commissioners, how are you feeling about it today?
I support this proposition. I'm a little distraught that, I think the original was nicer, in my view, because it has a certain kind of quality to it that it has a little bit more power in the windows, the fenestration, the, the piece at the back. I thought that was a really nice touch. What is it called? Where did I write it down? The loggia. The loggia, I thought, was a really quite.
You did like the loggia.
It's adaptive reuse, so you're adapting it to a new use, and you're making it have more fun. And try to keep it simple and plain as it was, was removing delight, I thought. But I can accept, I, the architect wanted it, I can accept.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Goldblum?
I like it the way it is better. I think that the windows on Madison are a big improvement. I think it simplifies the building and brings it more in character with the quality that this building has as opposed to others. I think that the reduction of the windows at the ends of the facades, as Stephen had suggested, is really much better. I think that the efforts to reduce the height of the rooftop addition are generally successful. I think that, I too think that if on the floors below, they're figuring out a way to manage it, to give you 10-foot ceilings with dropped beams for the steel, that a similar height approach could work here. I think they could work with staff on that, but I think it does still loom a bit. I think an easier way to reduce the effect would be to study the visibility of the air conditioning equipment in those screened kind of appendages to the center penthouse. I don't think it's a sin to see the top of an air conditioning unit peeking out over the top from Fifth Avenue. You know, the enclosure does not need to match the elevational height of the equipment behind it. It's really just about creating a visual clean line, and even that clean line can be violated at a distance, I think, which would allow for the two-side elements to lower themselves even more. As I had said last time, I mean, I think the stuff they did on the east side is great. Loggia was cute, but I think that the way that they're handling it is more appropriate from a historical preservation perspective, and also is more in keeping with the building. The building is very simple, which I think is nice. As I said last time, the key to this job is the brickwork, and this puts a big burden on them and on the staff to get the facade cleaned, pointed, in such a way that everybody sees right up front what it's going to be like, and it doesn't look like a mess when it's done. And I would strongly urge the applicant and the staff to request a large mock-up of both the limestone and the brick and the terracotta to be done well before, you know, the bricks are ordered en masse, to get it all right, because if this is a mismatch, it'll be a disaster.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Muster, you weren't here. I might come back to you. So let me start with the ones who were here. Commissioner Chu, I think last time you were comfortable, actually, with the penthouse as it was previously proposed, but did have comments about the windows and rationalizing those.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Goldblum's comments. I do think that the revised proposal here is more focused and distinct in terms of the window differences that really are based in the historic window design. So I do think it's a great improvement. I agree that this elevation, that we're seeing this corner, this slimming effect of focusing the center larger windows, I think on both main facades reinforce the centrality of the existing architectural cornice and ornament up there. Overall, I think all the moves do reduce the mass and give it more verticality. Those corner windows retaining the existing thinner ones, I think, help a lot in the slimming effect there. Yeah, I think it's a good revision and improved design. The only thing that I was slightly questioning was the introduction of the glass handrail, but looking at the views, it is quite high up and minimally visible. I guess it does reinforce what the design has taken on a more horizontal approach towards the rooftop additions, which I think is appropriate, and overall feels in keeping with the existing building below. One comment, and I think it's somewhat minor because of the height, but on the east facade, I was a little bit disturbed by the balcony of the glass rail sort of crashing into that cornice, which they're keeping and retaining and returning to the side, which I think is great. I think they could look at potentially just raising that parapet a tad, so that the brick at least aligns with that cornice, and then raising the glass rail up higher. But I leave that up to, you know, the talented designers looking at this. They can look at that with staff, but otherwise, I think this is appropriate.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lutfi? Yeah, I was largely very supportive of this project overall. As you said, it's so exciting that the buildings being returned to appropriate adaptive reuse. I was pretty much fine with the windows, so I'm fine with their being returned to where they are. As Michael said, it's a very clean, simple facade, and I think it works this way as I think it's great that they got rid of the loggia. It's also cleaner and works better with the facade. It's not necessary, what's there now looks like it was always there. It just really fits with the building. I think the terracotta, the extension of the terracotta string course is terrific. Producing the pavilion to a single bay is great, and I think the height reduction works really well right now. But I would encourage the applicant to continue to work with staff on not only the height, but sort of the whole, how the mechanicals fit in there. Maybe there is a way to sort of push that very top part back a little more, so that line on the east side, even though it's not as visible, is a little cleaner. Okay. Commissioner Chen, I think last time you were largely supportive, except for the loggia. So I'd like to now turn to you and see how you feel about the changes.
Yes, as you said correctly, I'm glad they got rid of the loggia.
Yes, as you said correctly, I'm glad they cut rid of the loggia, I've seen most of the comments, especially about doing a mockup, working with the staff, and I generally support.
All right, thank you. So Commissioner Master, you've heard the presentation and the, the comments are on the table, so I'll now turn to you.
Yeah, this is a fantastic project, and I think I would have been supportive of the first presentation, but looking at the changes that were made, I think it makes the alterations even better. I think that the reduction of the height in the penthouse is positive, the, the bulkhead. The more, the uniformity of the windows is better, and I think that the removal of the loggia also makes the project better, so I can find this appropriate.
Okay, all right. So I think we will make a motion to approve it today. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make that motion? And I'll add in the, the final, the final requests that we have for them to continue to work on a few items, yeah.
In the matter of LPC dash twenty-five, ten, nine, sixty-six, eight oh nine Madison Avenue, Upper East Side Historic District. Application to construct additions, modify and create window openings and replace windows. I know that the building's style, scale, material and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the penthouse and rear facade are simply designed and set inward from the prominent Madison Avenue and E sixty-eight Street facades. Therefore, the majority of the demolition will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features. But the building features have featured a visible setback penthouse with some architectural details since it was built, since it was built. And a historic rendering indicates a visible designed penthouse was previously considered by the architect. Therefore, the construction of a larger, more visible rooftop addition will be consistent with the historic concept and massing of the building. That the design and materiality of the rooftop addition, featuring brick, limestone, multi-light windows and metal and glass railings, will be in keeping with the residential character of the building and will help them unify the addition with the existing building. That the mechanical enclosure will be fully designed and integrated with the penthouse and the roof at, and the roof of this and other building in the historic district features visible penthouses with water tanks, enclosures and other visible mechanical equipment. That the building is adjacent to a smaller scale building along Madison Avenue and E sixty-eight. The proposed wraparound horizontal enlargement will be set back from the historic facade. Therefore, the proposed work will not overwhelm or meaningful alter the building historical relationship to the street scale. That the added horizontal massing will create a wide base on which to support a proportionally taller rooftop addition, resulting in an overall massing with other buildings of this age and style. That the head of the window opening at the wraparound addition will align with the window openings at the E sixty-eight Street facade, which along with the use of brick cladding, limestone features and decorative metal balconies will strengthen its relationship to the historic building and other apartment buildings in the historic district. That the open quality of the east facing setback terrace, featuring multi-light windows and decorative metal and glass railing, will not significantly alter the historic terracotta band course and quarters and will not obscure the historic twelve-floor facade. And that the building historically had a variety of window sizes and configurations. Therefore, the modification to enlarge and combine bathroom windows and to, the addition of new bay windows to, to the fenestration will not just, just disrupt a uniform pattern and will not substantially alter the character and original design of the primary facade.
Thank you. And we'll also ask the applicant to continue to explore opportunities to reduce the mechanical floor and working in consultation with the staff. And, and as with all brickwork projects, we'll ask them to submit mockups and samples of the brick and receive review and approval by the staff for the brickwork. All right, thank you. Commissioner Luthey, would you second that motion?
Second.
And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Chu.
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Luthey.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion pass.
That's approved, thank you. We'll now move to our public hearing agenda.
We'll start with public hearing item number one. LPC twenty-five dash zero eight nine zero four, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block two fifty-eight, lot one thirty-one, Thirty-Eighth State Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a commercial garage built circa nineteen hundred. The application is to demolish portions of the building and construct a new building on the lot.
Good morning Commissioners Brendan Coburn for this project. Last night I did a dry run of this and I thought I got it done in twenty minutes and, and I was immediately told that I had spent a full hour talking, so feel free to wave at me when I'm going on too long. This is a proposal for a new building behind the facade of an old building. Let's see. Not working. Okay. Let's see. Okay, the project is in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District and you can see it right here. It is in the southwesternmost corner of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. There's a little blow up of our location right here. You can see that it is, this site, it's currently occupied by a two-story parking garage. There are photographs from the forties and the present, forties, eighties and present down below. It's, uh, it's surrounded on the west by Adam Yalke Park and then the on-ramp to the BQE. The BQE itself is passing behind it right here. So it's a, it's a tricky site, practically speaking, and it's additionally tricky because our goal with this project is to, is to preserve this facade. And I'll say a little bit more about that in, in a moment. These are sandborne maps showing the history of the site, and so the eighteen eighty-six map shows the site as empty. It was occupied for a while by the Brooklyn Flint Glass Works. We don't know if there were buildings there or whatever. This was something that was going on largely outside or in sheds, but this is what that, that site was for at the time in, uh, by nineteen oh four, it is the powerhouse for the, um, the surface trolley on Montague Street, which is about five blocks away, but this is where the powerhouse was. And significantly, you can see the grid of, of Brooklyn Heights is still in place at this point, and our site is here, and the access to the site was actually off of Columbia Street through this lot right here to the back. And that is significant because there is an easement, which you can see in the nineteen sixty-nine, this little rectangle here in the corner that is affecting our project. The, the property is a whole piece, but with this ten by forty-foot easement in the corner. So power station with access off of Columbia in nineteen oh four. By nineteen thirty-nine, it has been converted into a parking garage. And at the time it was converted into a parking garage, it was, it got a new facade, and the new facade was meant to provide access to, to the, to the two parking levels. So this is a, a quick review of the, of the immediate context of the site. This is Willow Place, this is State Street, BQE is right there. This is a sort of survey of building heights in the immediate vicinity. Our proposed building is five stories, as are these two tenements and this apartment building, which I think Landmarks approved, I guess in the, probably in the early nineties. And then this is the Smith Miller Hawkinson sort of modern six-story apartment building that's up on Hick Street. So quite a lot going on here. This part of Willow Street, and this is sort of the crux of our project in, in some ways architecturally, is, um, these are the MERS, the modern MERS houses, three, uh, this one, this one, and then this one. And then this set of light green buildings, and this should be the same light green, is this Greek Revival row of, with that have a gigantic portico as part of the facade. And so our project is in dialogue, I think, with, with those buildings. Just another gnoly plan of the same. And then this is just a quick explanation. You can see the two, the two existing two-story garage here. There are multiple garage doors entering, going into the upper level and the lower level. You'll see those on the facade shortly, and this is our proposed site plan for the building. So we're, we're, this is a multifamily dwelling that is also a series of vertical condominiums, you know, sort of behaving in a way like row houses behind the facade. We are preserving the facade, and we're preserving the facade because we did initially come to the, the commission and to the Brooklyn Heights Association and say, how would you feel if we tear this building down altogether and just build some new row houses? And the Brooklyn Heights Association was not in favor of that at all. And, 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 and in, in conversations with them, it became clear that, that preserving the facade was an important thing to the, to the Brooklyn Heights Association. And so that is, is sort of how we set about designing the project, was taking that as a given and then trying to figure out how to make a five-unit building, a new construction building work behind it. These are, uh, this is a shot directly down Willow Street looking at our two-story garage. And on the left is the Gothic, not sorry, Greek Revival row with the sort of gigantic portico. And you can see this portico is, there's a porch here and then the facade of the building is about four or five feet behind it. And this row of four buildings exists, there's a single one, it, with the entire end of the block was once, you know, two complementary sides. This is all that is left of it on the west side of the street, and then the Joe and Katie MERS buildings are here on either side of it. And this is a, you know, detail of, of our, our, the forty-nine Willow Place Building, eighteen forty-six, and then a detail of the MERS buildings from nineteen sixty-five. And, and our project, you know, sort of looks to these for inspiration, both in terms of what you'll see as our proposal, which is to reuse the facade of the existing building as a portico or as an harbor for, and, and forecourt for our building, and then sort of take as a further clue the, the, the sort of use of plants that weave in and out of the front facade of the MERS buildings with the remaining Greek Revival building. Just a little bit more context, this is a set of photographs of the immediate surrounding. This is the Smith Miller Hawkinson building up on Hicks. This is the apartment building on State Street that is on Hicks and comes downstate. These are the two tenements that are directly adjacent to our property. You can see their wall right here. This is our two-story facade. We have one of the architects from the office standing in front of it to give you a sense of scale. These are huge openings going up and down. I'd ask you to take note of this window and this window because they will be modified in our scheme. These are also big roll-down garage doors, there's one for here as well. And then this is Adam Yalke Park directly to the west. You can see the sidewall of, of the parking garage here. This is directly across the street. This is down the block on the corner of Columbia Place. Coming up the block, you can see a little piece of the MERS parking garage garden. This is the MERS parking garage garden in the MERS building. Across the street, storefront, the, the Greek Revival row is behind it. There's this little apartment slash retail building in the middle of the block, and then there's a new construction building on the corner of Hicks and State right up the street. Just some shots of the existing condition of, of our building. Again, two-story, uh, large facade in the front. This is the view of the side from Adam Yalke Park. You can see there's, I don't know if you can see, but there is a big chain link fence up against our building. There's also a scaffold in one corner of it right now. This right here is the side of the building with the ten by forty-foot easement notch taken out of it, a notch which we will maintain in our project. And then this is a view at the basketball court. This is Atlantic Avenue over here. These are some views from Atlantic Avenue. So this is down underneath the BQE overpass, the, the on-ramp to the BQE is here. Our site is sort of back in this space, moving up the block, we're directly opposite the site. And this, you know, we're viewing the Landmarks District from outside the Landmarks District. This is sort of ostensibly the edge of Cobble Hill, but it is the sort of lich parcel that was excluded. So you can see the, you can barely see the, the, the brick wall in there. This is a close-up, you can, you can see it to some extent. The Adam Yalke Park has significant trees, you know, good and big and mature, so it's, it's quite, quite nice. And then some views from up the block, and there's really no visibility at that point as you, as you move up the block. This is just an early conceptual sketch for the draw, for the project where we're trying to think about how do we, how do we design a building that has some relationship to this facade and yet is doing very different things? I talked too much about this drawing yesterday, so I'm gonna be quick this time. This is just a quick look at our site plan, the existing roof. The building is truly full lot. You can see it runs all the way back to the, to the brick wall. In our proposal, we have our, you know, our, our footprint of the, the building itself here. This is the line of the existing front facade. We are stepped back ten feet from that facade, so creating this sort of ten-foot forecourt. You'll see that there's a line of plantings in the front that align with the areaways of the tenement apartment buildings to the left. We are proposing to keep most of the rear wall of this building. We're proposing to keep it mostly as an acoustic barrier to the noise of the, of the on-ramp of the BQE. And you'll see that later. We're not, it's a, it's sort of awkwardly too tall for gardens, but if we reduce it a little bit, we get some of the benefit of the sound attenuation. This is just a detail of the first floor and really a little bit to explain what's going on. You can see this is the areaway of the adjacent tenements and then our, our planters moving along in that same line along the sidewalk, and then they dart in and out of the front areaway of the house. These are, the stair down to a garage, the emergency grass for the garage stairs down to each unit. There's a four and a half foot drop from this side of the site to that side of the site, so the stairs are bigger at the east side, and then we have a, an at-grade entrance on the right side. That at-grade entrance allows us to actually come in here, have a small ADA lift that gets us down to this lower level and then into those buildings. So we satisfy our ADA requirements by, by making use of that interstitial space to circulate through there. And then lastly, there is a, the entry to a ramp that takes you down to the parking garage, which is underneath this building, fully below the building. And then you can see our back wall back here. This is just a line drawing and looks like digitally things are disappearing. But this is before and after, so you can see the, I guess, nineties building here, the flat, the tenement buildings here and the existing nineteen thirty-nine garage facade and Adam Yalke Park here. And this is our facade on the, standing behind our, our building, behind the existing facade on State Street, the, the proposed change. And then these are gonna be some views of our proposed building in relation to these elements in the neighborhood. And you can really, we're, you know, this is obviously a very prominent view of the building. You can see the existing facade here. Our, we, our building rises four stories and then it has a setback for the fifth floor. Our, our building rises four stories, and then it has a setback for the fifth floor. That setback, setback is an additional eight feet. And then you're seeing the bulkheads poking through at the very top there. And then this is getting closer, standing with the MERS house to the back. Just like to point out that there is, we're proposing to have ironwork within these openings. You can see that this opening's been lowered to the floor. I'll come back to this in an elevation drawing and discuss in a little bit more detail. But planters aligning with the front yard ironwork here, ironwork within these openings, our four-story facade here, the fifth story stepping back. And this is actually just the handrail at the parapet that you're seeing. It is not the bulkheads. This is just a quick view of this interstitial space where we're using some little Juliet balconies in each unit to allow you to come out and sort of occupy the space between the old facade and the new facade. And then I think this is an axonometric which sort of best explains the components of the building and its relationship to the surrounding building. So again, we're taking the gigantic portico of the Greek Revival building as a source of inspiration for our project and saying that our facade has become the portico for our new building. And then you can see, and the other thing that we're doing here, and this came a little bit out of our discussions with the Brooklyn Heights Association, is trying to make this new building read as though it is perhaps a converted industrial building, some sort of mill building, picking up a little bit on the articulation of that sort of utilitarian manufacturing structure. And so the facade is simple punched-brick openings, steel windows set within the facade, and that is sort of the main, for the main portion of the bulk. And then a similar approach to the side, not similar approach, but a same set of materials on the side, but a little, because this is a tertiary facade, we're allowing the windows to do what they need to do for the space, spaces that are inside. And then the setback, fifth floor, switches over to a wood and glass facade system. And then the roofs are green roofs, and then the bulkheads are set quite a ways back. And then this is just a quick view with the facade stripped away, so you can get a better sense of the, of what's going on right behind the facade. So this is with and then without. This is the side facade with trees removed, so it's sort of a little bit of a funny drawing. Again, we view this as a tertiary facade and have allowed the windows to do what they need to do to satisfy the interior spaces rather than the exterior spaces. And then this is the rear facade, and this is the view from directly across the street. And what we're doing here is, one, I like arches, so that's why they keep showing up. Two, I think they do contribute to, you know, the sort of pleasure of the city and seeing them up there. And they're sort of a, they will sort of be mostly viewed from afar, but they're also, and you'll see they have them on the lower floor, they're meant to actually direct one's eye from inside the building down towards the garden, down towards the trees, rather than directly across to the BQE, which is flying by at this location. This is a rear axonometric showing the relationship of all the parts. So this is, this is our 40-foot by 10-foot easement, and so we are using it to get down and enter the garage here. You can see that there is, we're just proposing ironwork around it. There's a chain-link fence that the Parks Department owns that runs around the whole perimeter of this. But then we have a wood fence separating our gardens from that. And then we're preserving the existing building wall, but at a lowered level back here. Four of our units have, you know, are considerably larger than the fifth one, and so they step, they are longer on the upper three floors and longer still on the lower two floors, and that's what you're seeing there. And so you're seeing also these arches on the lower, on the main floor of the building, the piano noble, and that, that is directing your view down towards the garden. Okay, some more views. This is from way, this is at the corner of Geralman, and looking all the way back. We had to do quite a bit of digital stuff to make this view possible because it's actually completely overgrown right now, so you can't even see anything. But this would be in the winter, probably the maximum visibility of the bulkheads in particular would be from down here. And then some quick walkthrough of the existing and proposed. So we have the existing two-story garage here. This is the 40-foot easement. This is our new building is here. We are maintaining the front wall and filling the gap between the new building and the old building with decorative ironwork. This is just a line of the chain-link fence, sort of cut in and out, so you can see that it's there, but also see what we're trying to do behind it. And then this is the reduced-height garden wall at the back of the lot. This is the existing rear facade, so this is all you see from Atlantic Avenue, reducing a little bit. And then this is our proposed new facade facing Atlantic Avenue. And quickly, some studies, some, not studies, but the proposed palette of materials for this. So this is our existing brick facade, which we maintain. We dropped this, this window becomes a full-size garage door so that we can have an access door to the garage, an access door to the first unit. This is as-is with the ironwork in it. You can see the, that we have an ironwork design that we think sort of relates to the decorative brickwork of the facade. This window gets a very simple cutout in it to provide access to this unit. And then these two units are accessed through one door here. This other door, which is existing, remains, and that is used for the other access to the garage. And finally, this door down here is the garage door. Our proposed new building is, is, what do you call it, 50, I didn't know this name, 56 DD. I think it's the only brick I seem to know to use. The bluestone capping or bluestone sidewalks, wood windows and doors at this top level. The steel windows are painted this brick color here. Windows and doors for cornice area is a black, and then the bulkhead itself would be this aged zinc siding. And then this is that same facade, sorry, whoops, that with the facade pulled away, so you can see what's going on behind the facade with those little Juliet balconies. We have this steel line sort of at the level of the piano noble, which has those balconies in it, and sort of separates this lower wood entry level from the upper brick facade. And then that same wood system is used on the top floor. And then you can see the bulkheads as well, way back there. Side facade, same materials. This is the rear facade, same materials. We just left this uncolored, but really the same, same brick, bluestone, arches at the main level and then at the top floor. A brick sort of soldier course here. The arch is three half-wighths of brick defining that edge. And then these are a small, little six-foot balconies on these four units, which are really meant more to hold greenery, but they have to have rails, and the greenery is to sort of further block the view of the highway from these units. This is just a building section. This we're proposing to do, the construction will be primarily a reinforced eight-inch CMU with a four-inch brick veneer insulation in between that. And then on the inside, windows are steel window system, front and back, wood on the top floor and the bottom floor. Joists are LVLs. That's it. And then this is just a quick visibility study. So the maximum visibility was from way, sorry, way, way down here on Geralman Street. So that, you can, you can see here that there's, that's where you would see the bulkhead the most. From State Street, you really can't see it. You know, you start to see it back here, it peaks up, and then gradually it gets larger. Also minimally visible from Atlantic Avenue, but again, Atlantic Avenue at that location is outside the district. And then just a couple of quick building sections to explain. This is through unit five. This is the ramp that goes down into the garage. And each of these units has a double-height space, and this double-height space is not here just for sort of architectural flair, but because we are using, you know, using the double-height space to get our required light and air when we have this, for those rooms, when we have this, when we have to be behind this existing facade. So this is an element which is both, you know, I think, nice as an architectural element within the space, but then practical in terms of serving the requirements of the building code. And you can also see our little step back here. This unit is the smallest, so the bulkhead is looking closer to the back than on the other units. I should, I should also, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned the red lines here are showing the extent of the existing two-story building. Section through a long building, pretty similar, just longer. Same thing. And then, all right, that, I, okay, yeah. So I, pardon me?
Okay.
I thought I'd stop there.
That's great. And I think we have some questions, so good place to stop. Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay. So I'm very confused about the ups and the downs. Right, on this facade, all the windows across the front of the building line up apparently, except for when you get to the roof, the bulkhead is, the two right-side bulkheads step down by a little bit, and the railing steps down by a little bit. When you go to the back, the, well, I'm sorry, but on the inside here, behind the, behind the screen wall, the, I think the second floors are a little bit higher on the right side than the left side, if I'm not mistaken. And when you get to the back, the two arches on, what would that be, would then be the left side or I guess the west side, they also step down. What's going on? Why do they step down?
Good question. So the building is being treated as two building segments. So in order to keep below the 50-foot height requirement for the limited height district, we, the building on the left has to be 50 feet off of the Brooklyn datum at the center line of the building. And then the building on, the building segment on the right has to be 50 feet off of its building datum. So we have to have a step back in the roof.
Well, unless you wanted to make the one on the left a little bit shorter.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And, and then the reason we were able to get it all to work on the front facade by playing with the window and sill heights, and the idea there was to make the thing read a little bit more like it was an old, a reused loft building. And then in the back, we were less concerned about it, so we let it do what it was doing. Yeah.
All right. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
The existing facade of the garage that you're retaining there, how is it supported once you lose the building behind it?
The, you remember the little Juliet balconies and the band of steel?
Yeah.
I plan to use a sort of outriggers from that to reach across and support.
They aren't shown in the rendering, so...
No, we're still waiting on the engineering for that, but that is the...
So you are gonna brace back beams to the, to the new building behind?
I think so. I mean, the engineer thinks he can do it without it, but I think it's actually an element which I don't mind having, so...
And then, so there are front door entries at each of the store, the penetrations of the existing facade that lead you straight back to the unit? Is that how it works?
Yeah. And, yes. Let me just see what the, yeah. Yeah, so there's, there's a door, a door, a door in, a gate door here that goes to the garage. There's a gate door next to it that goes to this first unit. This gate goes to this unit. This gate goes to that unit. This single gate goes to these two units. And also provides access to that ADA lift to get you down onto the lower level.
Okay. And they're divided by planting. It's essentially open space behind the facade?
Yeah.
Okay. And on this facade, the other question, because I look at your scheme, and essentially you retained the existing exterior walls except for the park side face, which I assume because you had to go deep foundation on this end, and you had to get, remove it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Master?
Yeah. On the top cornice in this drawing, it looks like it's like a deep red, and yet I feel like in some of the other slides, you said that the cornice was black?
Yeah. Sorry, that's, we had a hell of a weekend drawing like crazy, and some things, so the elevation drawings have the correct palettes, and then some of the renderings have the wrong color, but that, that one is meant to be black.
Is there a reason why you chose black?
You know, it's, it's, it's a, sort of the color of cornices generally. So I think that was, I, it's not, we didn't think about it hugely, but...
Yes, Commissioner Lutfi?
This is an aesthetic question. I, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're referring back to everything that surrounds you. And I just was thinking in terms of your choice of the color of the window, muntens and frames, you know, painting them that pinky color. When I look at everything around you, everything is black. And I feel like it, it might help, it might help connect the building a little more to what's around it if it wasn't pink and it was black instead. I'm just wondering, I know you picked it because of the red brick and, but I was just one, and I don't know that, but I would love it if you would explain why you picked that color.
What, what sort of explanation? Like a true explanation or a...
Yeah, yeah, a true one.
Okay, so we've drawn it both ways. And then Sarah Najar, who is the, is the sort of design architect and from Madrid, felt that it should be red, and I liked the way it looked. So that's the true answer.
Okay.
I think, I think we're, it's, it's not something that we would be opposed to if that was an important consideration.
And I wonder if, was part of the thinking that because it's not in the same plane as the other buildings, and it's sort of a secondary layer behind the loggia, that it grew its own thing and sort of be...
I think that's true, and I think that, that, you know, the, the ironwork itself, the relationship of the existing facade to the proposed ironwork, to the proposed new facade, two are to my mind still in need of further consideration. So, so I, you know, I think we're headed conceptually in the right direction, and I like what we've done, and I would build it this way, but I think that those, those elements remain to be sort of fine-tuned.
Do you have a question? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
It's a question about facades. You have three facades. The back facade, we elected to use a different architectural language.
Well, the arches came about as a tool for directing the eye inside the building down towards the garden, and I was sort of, am concerned about the experience of being in the buildings and looking out at the entrance ramp to the BQE and the BQE itself. But I also thought, honestly, it would just be cool to be coming down the BQE, stuck in traffic, of course, and looking at that set of arches, is sort of reaching across that facade. And I, I mean, I've spent just, you know, months on the BQE on-ramp over the years, and I'm, you know, I'm always like, as we move through Brooklyn Heights, I'm always sort of obsessed with what, you know, what's going on in the brickwork of the buildings that are along that edge, especially that edge which has been cut through, including those great, you know, the housing project that's there on Columbia.
Any other questions? All right. Not seeing other questions for the moment. We'll move to public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? All right, not seeing anyone. I will turn over to our Director of Intergovernmental and Community I will turn over to our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, Stephen Thompson, to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you. Those joining us via Zoom who wish to testify, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelists. And we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Judy Stanton.
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We do not support this application for 38 State Street. We think that redevelopment of this site would work better, would work better as a true, single multifamily building. Before this site became the Montague Street cable car powerhouse and then was converted to the present garage in 1925, the site used to be part of a larger 19th century industrial parcel. Over the course of the last 130 years, as the adjacent lots from that industrial parcel were converted to residential, they were all developed as multifamily apartment buildings. We think that is the right pattern to follow here. With regard to preserving the garage facade, our first preference would have been a single multifamily building making adaptive reuse of the garage building. If that was not feasible, our second preference would have been a new multifamily building without preserving the facade. Something like the current proposal, which jumps through hoops to incorporate the existing facade into what is essentially a group of maisonnette rowhouses, is a distant third choice. While we appreciate the design effort that went into threading the needle on the project's conflicting goals, ultimately, it is an overly convoluted set of offset entrances and awkward courtyard space between the garage facade and the rowhouses. Designing for maisonettes unnecessarily introduces too many exterior entrances and too many interior stairs. The courtyard and the screen in front of it are clever ways to preserve the facade, but achieving that small goal misses what should have been the larger goal. This project should have been a single building with a simple footprint and a street presence that complements the other multifamily buildings around it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic Districts Council. Brendan Coburn is a member of HTC's Public Review Committee. He presented this item to the committee but was recused from the discussion. HTC finds this proposal to be largely appropriate. However, we find the proposed ironwork to be inappropriate. HTC is overall supportive of this project, and we are thrilled that the applicant is retaining the original facade. Our concerns are with the ironwork and the masonry openings of the original facade. We do not see precedent for such ironwork in this neighborhood. We believe it abstracts the original facade from the new development and appears utilitarian in renderings. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors, and civic art. Now, the VSNY Preservation Committee was divided over this proposal for 38 State Street. Some felt that this garage is not a contributing building within the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, and as such, it would be acceptable to demolish it entirely and design a new building which would respond to the adjacent structures in terms of materials, details, and scale. Others felt that the building's handsomely detailed brickwork and its placement flush with the street and the adjacent facades should be preserved. It also has historic importance as the power plant and car barn for the Montague Street cable car line of the Brooklyn Heights Railway Company. But neither side thinks the applicant's proposal to leave the facade as a token screen wall is successful as is. This is a rare case where facadeism makes sense as a preservation tool, but the use of this facade as a detached wall is, we feel, too abstract and unrelated to the new building behind it. Further, we're concerned that the ground floor of the new building seen through the openings of the garage facade does not relate well to either the old facade in front or to the floors above. We believe that stronger organization and better detailing would help it relate better to both. Finally, the planters proposed outside the historic wall serve to obscure and diminish the historic facade. Nevertheless, there are many good things about the proposal, including its height, massing, rear and side facades, and overall relationship to the other buildings on the street. We recommend that the applicant return with a revised proposal and that subsequent public meeting be open for testimony by the public. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our next speaker will be Chris Neville.
Good morning. I'm Chris Neville with additional BHA testimony. As already stated, we do not support the application. This site is challenging, but four of the current proposal's key move undercut basic preservation goals, and they also undercut each other. First, the near total demolition of a contributing building without a conclusive historical rationale. Second, the merely performative preservation of the detached street facade. Third, the ahistorical setback of an all-new industrially styled block. And fourth, the internal division of the main block into five separate single-family homes. The resulting gated enclave of loft-adjacent maisonettes has no historical precedent here or in the district at large. Any redevelopment of this site must maximize adaptive reuse of the historic fabric, but it must also integrate new construction more meaningfully with the old, reflecting a deeper engagement with the area's historic context. As for context, this location has a documented history of continuous commercial and industrial use dating back to the mid 1700s. This is clearly shown in many other historic maps, which are concerningly absent in this presentation. The site also has never been occupied by residential buildings. Unlike the iconic rowhouse blocks of Brooklyn Heights proper, development here faced the foot of an Atlantic Avenue and was shaped more by the proximity of the working waterfront, with many more industrial and commercial buildings mixed with working and lower-middle-class housing, mostly tenements, flats, and shops with apartments above. The current proposal sidesteps these defining aspects of hyper-local character. The site itself has also seen generations of adaptive reuse long before landmarking. And after landmarking, adaptive reuse has continued to play a key role across the district. It has set a baseline for appropriateness that minimizes demolition to retain a more nuanced layering of historic character. Adaptive projects are especially common at the edges of the district. Here in the South Heights, for example, within just two blocks of 38 State, these include residential conversions of a YMCA, a hospital, and an FDNY pumping station, along with a chapel-turned-community center. In the Far North Heights, like projects have transformed a police precinct, a parochial school, a children's charity, and a candy factory. Even the Central Heights includes, among other conversions, a pair of especially relevant precedents, the former Heights Cinema, itself inserted into an older building, and the College Place garages, true multiple dwellings, all of them. These examples vary case by case, but they all point to an approach that is more site-aware and more adaptive in spirit than the near-blank-slate proposal for 38 State. The current application doesn't explore these or any others, but it should. Thank you for the opportunity to submit these additional comments.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval.
Thank you. Brendan, would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
Sure. I think, you know, I certainly appreciate the comments from the Brooklyn Heights Association. And I did spend quite a bit of time talking about this. And I think that the, the bulk and the facade of the, of the building evolved from something that looked more clearly like five vertical maisonettes into something that looked more like a converted loft building. And, you know, it's, I, look, I appreciate all those things. If I had endless amounts of, of time and, 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 and could explore all these other options, you know, I might have. But that was, the directive that I had was to, to try and meld the requirements of the, the person developing the project with what I read as the desire of the, of the neighborhood to maintain this facade. Yeah, I think I am threading a needle here. I think we are threading a needle, and I think it's a tricky needle to thread. I think that this particular corner of the neighborhood is, for one thing, a corner of the neighborhood. The fact that the BQE cuts through this site in the way it does sort of, you know, kind of changes the, 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 the requirements, if you will, or the, or the prevailing conditions in the area, such that, you know, trying to design a building that is, that is blocking sound and is, is, is turning one's eyes away from the highway and looking down towards gardens while also addressing the neighborhood to the north are among all of the challenges that we are, we are trying to, to work with here. So, you know, I think the building does read as multifamily dwelling. It functions as five maisonettes, that is true. But I don't see what the difference is. This is five, it's five family building. That's multifamily.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions on this one? Okay, so let's move towards discussion. Commissioner Lutti, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. The hearing is closed, and we have a very interesting project before us to discuss, I think, discuss very conceptually and, and then get into sort of more details. And, you know, the first question is really sort of about the existing building. I would note that the Brooklyn Heights designation report speaks specifically about the district being significant for its 19th century residential architecture. It notes the commercial buildings on Montague and Fulton Street, but does not speak to 20th century garages as in that report when the district was designated. So that's one thing to think about as you think about the significance of this existing building. And then the other thing is, is as you think about the significance and if you come to the conclusion that by virtue of its, you know, patterned brickwork and material, that there is historic value or layering that should be retained, the question then is, you know, how do you do that? And the applicant is proposing sort of a loggia plan as opposed to integrating it into it and adding on top of the garage? So I think that there are questions about, first, you know, is this building significant to the historic district? And should it be retained? And then, second, how do you do that? And then I think we'll get to design in detail. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Thanks. Okay. Yes, very interesting conceptual approach. It's kind of like, you know, they've taken their, their, their right hand and tied it behind their back and making their life much more difficult by doing this. But I can appreciate it, and I think it's an interesting and good effort. In a, in a conceptual way, it's kind of like domino, right? You're keeping the, the facade, turning it into a relic and doing a gap that you're going to make into outdoor space without rigors. And then, you know, filling it with green stuff and then putting your building within behind it. And I think, maybe I'm just, my head is very schematic in the way it works, but I think that that's, it's thinking about it from that kind of paradigm or vantage point that I, I can, that I approached these comments. I think the, the most important thing that I would suggest that Brendan re-explore is the fenestration on the front facade, the brick, and the brick, the brick on the front facade. See, unlike Duane Street or, which was the other example of a facade floating and becoming a sculpture, or domino, here, what Brendan has done is put a quasi-historic building behind a actual historic building and creating a narrative around that using, you know, the, the, the fiction of the, of the industrial building as a kind of a type. And I think that that's a lot harder. Now you've taken your left hand and tied it behind your back. Because whereas domino and Duane put a modern building that's kind of monolithic in quality behind a very articulated historic facade, here you've got, you know, history and then, and then faux history. And the problem is that the faux history doesn't work with the history, you know? And the biggest aspect that doesn't work is the division of the facade, for me. Very interested to hear what others say about it. But for me, the five regular bays, irrespective of what happens within it, I don't care if it's townhouses or apartment building or one big house, the five bays are sitting behind a five-bay building, but they don't line up. They don't relate. They don't talk to each other. The brick of the building is different from the brick of the facade, but it's a brick building, you know? And the brick of the front is kind of more 1920s art, art deco, I don't know, pattern, basket weave brick. It has a kind of a very specific charm to it that the, the building behind doesn't really pick up on, you know? It, it, or at least it doesn't in a way that I could, I can tell. I, I think that the retention of the fragment is a legitimate approach to take. But I think that the rendering of it as a standalone front facade that could tip over if you blew really hard might not be the best way to go. I think that had, let's say, the side return continued and there was some kind of articulation between the new sitting on top of the old wall or some other kind of tie-back, tie-around, something that gave it a little bit more three-dimensionality, a little bit more of a sense of that it was a fragment of a building and not just a facade that you bought at the salvage yard, I think that it would kind of feel more of its place. I think that the, the side facade is fine. I think Jeannie's idea about the red windows struck me also as peculiar. I think that the stepping down is a, is a giveaway that the building is, is not one building, but is two, or in this case, five. I would, I would bite the bullet and make them all the same height. I think the, I think the rear facades are perfectly charming and totally fine. I kind of would, would hope that somehow they could relate to the front facade. But again, I don't think that's our business from a preservation perspective. And I wish I could think of appropriate Beastie Boys puns to put in here, but I can't, so I'll stop.
All right. Commissioner Master?
Yeah. I actually like the design of this. I think they did a very good job in retaining the facade of the garage as had been requested. And I find that the setback and then the facade of the, the front facade to be something plain and simple so that it doesn't compete with the decorative elements of the historical front of the garage. And what I'm looking at is kind of the view from the, the street, you know, because basically that's where you're going to be seeing it. And you see the decorative front and then the, the rear, which is just a plain, I think, a plain fenestration. And then the setback for, I guess, the penthouse above. So I, I like the design. I like the rear facade. I think the side is also fine. I think the side is also fine, as it's really going to be fronting the park with a lot of trees in front of it. My only comment is that the black cornice, I think, kind of stands out too much and kind of detracts a little bit from the decorative garage facade that we're retaining. So other than that, I can find this appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chu?
I agree. Very interesting proposal. And I think that I agree in some part with both previous commissioners' comments. I agree with a lot of what Michael said in terms of the relationship of the proposed new building and the retained facade. I think testimony previously talked about that I felt was in tune with my feelings is that what we see in front of us, I feel like if they had kept more existing fabric, it could be workable. I am particularly disturbed by the park side not retaining its third wall because it's sort of, it's literally a building section on that side, but it reveals how, I guess insignificant that front facade is in the greater picture of this design. If it had, as Michael even put, three-dimensionality, I would feel more weight of the relationship of what was there and what was added. But the way it's shown, I feel that either the applicant could have kept more of the fabric and integrated it better or potentially not have kept it at all. So in terms of the two approaches, they chose somewhere in between, and I feel like it needs, it's neither here nor there, and that's what's troubling me about the design. It could go either way. I do think a lot of the comments were made that are pertinent, such as the mass. I think the mass is sensitive. I think that in the applicant's effort to retain that facade, they did do a massing that I think isn't bad. I like the fact that it reduces its scale adjacent to the park, and I think that's what some of the residents that live there like about the existing building is that it steps down next to the park and doesn't create a large mass on the corner. So I do think that the setback does help its scale, helps its setback because of the height, and it's more respectful to the park's surrounding. I am also disturbed by what is called the rear facade, which is the side that faces the major roads of the window drop. It feels like a mistake, and either you make the facade step down with it or you align them. And I do think that overall, the front and the back of the proposed mass should have some relationship. I prefer that. And again, you know, that's just, I think, a design criticism right now. The front facade has this setback at the top, which has painted, I believe it says cream and not gray. This does appear to be gray in the rendering. But I also agree that, I think I'm disturbed mostly by the contrast of the color of the black. Here it's shown more like corant, but I believe it's black with the light color below it, and it really stands out in the renderings. And I think that it could be, a color palette needs to be looked at a little bit. I don't mind the consistency of the approach of the large mass of the proposal, but again, it doesn't work with existing facade. I kept looking at the slide where they took the facade on and off and trying to determine if that would be appropriate without it. I think that if there was a version that was done that took some of the good things about the aspect of the facade and worked them into it, we could be amenable to that. Yeah, I think that I've covered most of my comments. Again, there are some good things about this proposal, but I don't think it's quite found itself yet.
Okay.
Last comment. The street, Commissioner Masters' comment about the street, I think, is really important. The scale at the street level and the sensibility of this facade and the sort of mesh that was placed into those openings did appear very aggressive in the renderings and almost opaque, which I think are counter to what the concept that, as described, was trying to achieve.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
So it's great that something is happening on the site and that it is going to be, serve multiple families at some point. And I, you know, I think it took a lot of thought and creativity to figure out how to use this old garage facade, which is quite lovely, actually. I'm very happy that it's part of the project. And I appreciate the fact that you spent a lot of, the applicant spent a lot of time thinking about how this project sort of meets the street and how it relates to everything around it. I do have to say, though, that there is a sense, and I think that you could just fix it if you closed the, you know, the front facade on the side. There is a sense that it's a little bit of a Hollywood set, and it seems a little, you know, artificial in that regard, and it shouldn't have that feeling because it is a wonderful facade. So I think if you make a few moves here, you can sort of fix that and do it exactly this way. Look, this is a residential development project, and behind this facade, the units have to work, and there is always a regularity in residential units. And so I think that, you know, your challenge was in fact a challenge. And while I agree with what Michael said about it not lining up, the facade's not lining up, and I spent a lot of time thinking about it. I think in a way, because of the separation, I can accept it. You know, if you had done the design a different way and you had integrated the bottom with the top, which I think would have been great, that would have been one thing. But given the way it's conceived, which I think is completely acceptable if it's tweaked, then I think it's okay. I also feel that the way it sets back on the front and in the rear is fine. I am having a problem with, speaking of how this hits the ground, the, just that fencing in the front that fills these voids that you've created. It almost seems like, there is something that seems like you're just trying to keep people out and keep, and in a way that's not appealing. And I would like to recommend that you reconsider what that design is or just how you do that, how you have some kind of fencing, but how it works to make this feel like this is integrated, which is your goal with the street and the neighborhood. I am also concerned about the use of color because there's something about this, again, you made this point that, you know, you looked to what was around you, but what's around you is something different. And this seems more institutional to me, almost like it could be a school or just another kind of public use. And I don't think it's going to wear well with time in terms of the look and feel. My sense is it's going to look dated. So I would suggest that you rethink the color of, you know, the window framing and montants and, you know, look to your neighbors. And I think the, it could be very sharp looking if you reconsider that black. I think the side is perfect, and I think it's wonderful that, and I like the arched windows that you put in here. I think they work well and they, you know, they just blend in nicely. Oh, also, I think that the, you might want to set back the guard rail at the penthouse roof a little bit. And it should be finished to match whatever else is going on.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
When I saw this project last night, I thought, just a 1970s project, and the idea of keeping the front facade freestanding was, made sense to me. And then when I saw the section, the transition between the front facade and the building and how it was handled, it was masterful. It was the way the light would come in, I mean, I thought it was very well done. And I thought the idea of this facade doing all of this space should be, the in-between space being so important, made sense to me. And later, thinking about it again, I thought, you know, should there be a connection between the front facade and the building itself? Should there be a transition of materiality somehow to say, look, we're friends together? We're not, it's not a dialectic. It's, we could come together somehow. But then I thought, that's for the architect to decide. My one problem is that the front facade, the freestanding facade, should be pure. You should not cut that in the center of it, make that cut, because that takes away from the kind of historical purity of that facade. The cutting into it removes it from history somehow. Keep it just pure. Take the garage doors, we walk in, that's it. And then I thought the side, the back facade with the park was kind of spare, and I thought maybe, you know, something could be done at the corners, perhaps, to make a bit of a transition. But in a whole, I think the project is well done.
Okay. All right, thank you all for your thoughtful comments. So yes, Commissioner?
I realized I was not clear on something. I'm sorry. And what I was trying to get at with the bays was not that they should necessarily squeeze and stretch to make five facades that line up with the five bays of the building, but to look at how, and the reason I thought that this particular approach was challenging was that the fenestration type of like a single window that expresses the unit within is not the only way to do it. If you did punches, that, I think that's behind the Bronx, the Brooklyn Heights Association's comments. I think what they're going for with an apartment building is not necessarily what happens inside, although maybe they are, as much as the fenestration that's associated with an apartment building, which is punches. And, you know, an array of punches that were relatively uniform would neutralize the bay reading of this. Similarly, a horizontal fenestration, you know, a strip window expression, even if it was divided into five equal pieces, the expression of it would neutralize the irregularity between the front and the back. And of course, you know, using that domino, it's a glass grid, so there's no bays to speak of, but, and which is a more modern approach, you know, you take a monolithic approach. But I think there are many approaches to take that would get you there.
Okay. All right, thank you for those very thoughtful comments. Brendan, I think what we have here is we do have support for the approach that you've taken, conceptually, and I think that even you mentioned that there are still some of the ideas that need to be developed further to really realize this. And I think that's what we've heard in the comments here, that this approach of keeping the fabric at the ground floor and as a fragment and setting behind could work, but I think it needs to be tied back into the building in a way that gives it some three-dimensionality, more substance, and a dialogue between the two. And so there have been a lot of comments and suggestions about how to do that, and I think we'll take no action today. We'll let you sort of develop those ideas and details a little bit more and come back to us when you're ready. Okay? All right, thank you. All right, thanks, and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC 25-02374, An Application for Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 386, Lot 49, 183 Wyckoff Street in the Borum Hill Historic District. This is a row house built circa 1854. The application is to construct a rooftop bulkhead and rear yard addition.
All right, Commissioners, Lacy Williams, Preservation Staff. The item before you is for 183 Wyckoff Street, located on the north side of Wyckoff Street, between Hoyt Street and Bond Street in the Borum Hill Historic District. The building is the second building in from the corner, which is open with a community garden. The proposal is to construct a rooftop stair bulkhead and a rear yard addition. This house has an existing two-story rear yard addition, which per the Sanborn map appears to have been constructed sometime prior to 1915. You'll note that there are some existing accessory structures at adjacent rear yards, and our property is here. The existing and the proposed. Here are the 1940s and 1980s tax photos, and this is the existing condition of the front facade on the left and the rear facade of the existing rear addition on the right. At the roof, the applicant is proposing a bulkhead, which is shown in the elevation on the right. It will be clad with gray stucco. And the applicant is also proposing a one-story addition extending from the existing addition, which will be clad in brick with gray stucco at the side facades. Please note that the modification of the masonry openings at the second floor of the existing addition do meet the commission's rules and are not before the commission today. The mock-up of the bulkhead painted gray in the photos on the left. And the bulkhead will be visible looking west on Wyckoff Street. The rear addition will be minimally visible through the adjacent community garden just to the east. That is section, existing and proposed, and the applicant is here to address any comments or questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions on this one? All right, while we're absorbing it, let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? All right, not seeing anyone, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us, I assume, who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson. I'll be promoting you to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have 10 minutes to speak. Sorry, three minutes.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District Council. HTC finds the massing of this proposed addition to be inappropriate. HTC recognizes and appreciates that the rear facade presents a difficult design issue. We find that the series of setbacks and massing to be awkward and in need of refinement. The three-tiered wedding cake massing needs to be simplified. A single two-story extension with a single setback would be a more appropriate form. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining, I assume, who wishes to speak? Please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to turn to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to any of the comments that we've heard. And just come up, state your name for the record, and then you may speak.
Hi, everyone. My name is Val Sabra. I'm the applicant. Just in response to the HTC comments, while I recognize that this would be great if we could extend the building even more on the second floor, we are maxed out zoning-wise, and it was only through the City of US program that we actually managed to get this one-floor extension.
Okay, so you are, the building has an existing 15-foot, two-story addition, and you're just pulling the ground floor out an additional 14 feet.
Which is not visible from any public. Which is not visible from any public thoroughfare.
Okay, well, except that little teeny bit through the garden. Okay. All right, Commissioners, any final questions on this? I, I just had one final question. So, the once, the, the L on the adjacent building, is that one story or is that two stories or?
That's one story. It's pretty tall, so that's the reason why we have such low visibility.
Okay, and that comes out to about half the depth of your proposed one-story addition.
More or less. So there also have an additional fence, so it's.
All right, and can, do you have the full block plan? Can we zoom out and look at the full block? Okay, there we go. Okay, and so number 179 comes out, has a, a sort of a centered addition that comes out 22 feet. A little bit further out, and then the others are further back. Okay. All right, Commissioners, any final com, questions? All right, we're gonna close the hearing and begin our discussion. Excuse me. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right. Excuse me. So this is a proposal for a stair bulkhead, which is sloped and typical in form and visible over the side facade. And a rear yard, a one-story rear yard addition that would extend from an existing two-story rear yard addition, an additional 14 feet. And it has a deeper L next to it. But, which comes out to about half the depth of what's being proposed. And another, two buildings away, another deep addition that comes out a little bit further. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Overall, in this donut, the additions are not that deep. However, there is another one not that far away. And, um, actually, I think I can accept this.
All right, Commissioner Jefferson?
No, okay. I can approve. The construction of the rear yard addition, I think, should be reduced.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I'm actually okay with this.
Okay, Commissioner Master, appropriate. Commissioner Chu?
I, I can approve this. I think the one thing I was trying to look at is from the community garden, from that vantage point in, but it seems that the one-story extra-tall neighbor blocks it regardless. So I can approve this.
All right, and I think also for those reasons, and its sort of location at the end of the block, I could support it, but we are five in support. So Commissioner Jefferson, I'll ask, do you feel very strongly that it should be reduced, or do you think you could? Do you think you could go along with the majority? Okay. Okay, thanks. All right, Commissioner Lutfi, would you make the motion?
In the matter of docket 25-02374, 183 Wyckoff Street, Boreham Hill Historic District, a row house built in 1854, the application is to construct rooftop bulkhead and rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Boreham Hill Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rear yard addition will be only minimally visible through the adjacent community garden to the east, that the one-story addition will only extend the basement level of the existing addition, that the addition will feature brick and stucco cladding, wide M-piers, and a ratio of solid to void, which are consistent with the design of rear facades and rear additions within this block, that the proposed rooftop bulkhead featuring simple massing and gray finish stucco cladding will only be visible over a secondary facade and will not call undue attention to itself, and that the work will not diminish the special architecture and historic character of the Boreham Hill Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master? With six in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, that's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC 24-07693, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 2091, lot 72, 217 DeKalb Avenue in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is an Italianate-Greek Revival-style row house built in 1850. The application is to construct a rooftop bulkhead and install railings and skylights.
Dina Posner, Preservation Staff, presenting this application for 217 DeKalb Avenue. The applicant is also present to answer any questions. The scope of the application is to construct a rooftop stair access bulkhead and roof deck, as well as install skylights. This slide shows the building's location within the Fort Greene Historic District, as well as an existing condition photograph of the front. On the left is the 1940s tax photo and on the right, the designation photo. And this is a view of the existing rear facade. On the left is the existing roof plan and on the right, the proposed, showing the location of the bulkhead, roof deck with guardrails and the skylights. Those are the existing and proposed front elevations. The bulkhead is proposed in a white finish stucco and the guardrails in a black finish metal. In the rear elevations, the skylight on the left is proposed with a bronze finish frame and the other skylights with black finish frames. Are the existing and proposed roof sections, the bulkhead is eight foot, five inches at its tallest point and slopes down towards the front of the roof. These are the photos of the mock-up on the roof, including the bulkhead, guardrails, and skylights, and the mock-up also accounts for the proposed raised roof deck. And some context of the neighboring roofs, the roof to the east has some large doneage and mechanical equipment, which you can see in the bottom-left and bottom-center photos. And these elements are visible over the rear facade. And the following slides will go through the visibility study. To note, in this aerial view, there are playgrounds both directly behind this building and seen at the top of this image, and to the southwest of this building, seen in the bottom-left of the image. The existing and proposed sightlines show that the installation is not visible directly over the front. However, the installation is visible from points in the playgrounds and surrounding streets, which we will go through with the mock-up views. This map shows the view locations. And we are starting in the playground behind the building, moving east to west. The rear facade, the rear facades of this row are visible through their rear yards, and 217 is the white facade. These windows, these photos will show the winter visibility, and the left-hand photo on each slide is not zoomed in, and the upper-right photo has been zoomed in. Now, moving east to west. Now we are south of the building and are going to move west to east. From this point on Carlton Avenue, looking through the playground, the front guardrail is visible, and the photo on the upper right, again, has been zoomed in. From this point inside the playground, the guardrail is visible, or sorry, nothing, nothing is visible. And from Adelphi Street, the guardrail is visible. Closer to the building, the installation is not visible. And then as you move east, the guardrail, again, becomes visible. The next couple of slides are a comparison of the view over the rear facade with the winter view versus the view with the leaves filled out. And finally, this is a precedent of a stair bulkhead at 203 DeKalb Avenue, which was approved by the commission at a hearing in 2016. In addition to the visibility over the rear facade from Adelphi Street, it is also visible over the front facade. That concludes the presentation, and the applicant's here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions at this time? All right, not seeing anyone, move to public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone. I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to testify, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval on the condition that the H-trac unit is rotated 90 degrees and relocated against the stairs, so the railing is not visible from DeKalb.
Thank you. All right, so the community board did have a recommendation to re, to rotate the unit to, I think, reduce the visibility of the railing. Would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, Andrew Peretti, the owner at 217 DeKalb. We worked with, with Dina, kind of through several rounds of mock-ups to reduce visibility kind of as much as possible. So we think the visibility is sufficient, the railing visibility is sufficient as it's likely to retain.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any final questions, Commissioners? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and so we have this proposal for the rooftop bulkhead, skylights, and deck, which have some long-distance views and, that are, are in many ways seasonal views through trees and oblique views. And again, the bulkhead is shaped in a way that is typical of rooftop features, including one that we approved further down the street. Commissioner Master, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, I think that the bulkhead and the metal railings are very simply designed, and I can find them appropriate. There's really minimal visibility and maybe only through the playground through foliage. So I could, I think this is appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Appropriate.
All right, and I think, all right, Commissioner Goldblum is comfortable as well, so we'll go ahead and make a motion.
In the matter of LPC-24-07693, 217 DeKalb Avenue, the Fort Greene Historic District, an Italianate-Greek Revival-style row house built in 1850, application is to construct a rooftop bulkhead and install railings and skylight. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the stucco-clad bulkhead and metal railings will be simple in design, typical in terms of materials and finishes, and setback from the front and rear facades, that the bulkhead will feature a sloped roof to reduce visibility, and the railings will be minimum height and maximum setback allowed by code, that only the railings will be visible in context with the front facade in oblique views at a distance and against a taller neighboring building, that in views from the rear, the installations will only be seen at a distance over secondary facades and within the context of other rooftop accretions and/or taller secondary facades of neighboring buildings, and that the roof, that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Fort Greene Historic District.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With six in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number four, LPC 25-09319, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1077, lot 12, 534 First Street in the Park Slope Historic District. This is a neo-Renaissance-style row house designed by Eisenla and Carlson and built in 1909. The application is to enlarge the rear yard addition.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chanel Gunther, Preservation Staff. The item before you is for 534 First Street in the Park Slope Historic District. The subject property is located on the south side of First Street, near 8th Avenue. And I will walk you through the details of the proposal, which is to construct a one-story addition at the roof of the existing two-story L. This is a block plan showing rear yard extensions at this block with a prevailing height of two stories, and three of which are three stories. Please note that there is a break in the street wall on Second Street, and so the proposed addition will be visible through this gap. Here's an exonometric study of the rear of the building, showing the existing two-story L to be, showing the existing two-story rear L and the proposed addition, which includes a large multi-light window assembly and roof railings. The existing conditions of the rear of the building is shown in the photo on the left, and the photo on the right shows, um, sorry. The photo on the, the existing conditions of the rear of the building is shown in the photo on the left, and a photo of the other rear Ls at the adjacent buildings, including one that has been raised to three stories, is on the right. This slide shows the existing and proposed building sections. Also, here's an enlarged version. And here is an existing rear elevation, as well as the proposed. Next are some renderings that show the proposed materiality, which will match the existing white painted brick facades and black finished windows of the subject property. And there is a proposed roof deck that will incorporate black finished railings. The next few slides show existing and proposed floor plans, and we can come back to them if there are additional questions. The proposed addition will utilize full brick veneer at the exterior. And the following slides will document the visibility of the existing condition from Second Street and also showing it with the proposed addition. Other three-story rear extensions can be found within the Historic District, as seen in these aerial views. And finally, here are some examples of commission-approved work with elements like this proposal that are visible from public thoroughfare, thoroughfares, including a large multi-light fenestration and visible railings, an addition at an existing rear L, and the construction of a rear yard addition with its upper story visible. The applicant is present to discuss the appropriateness of the proposal and to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. All right, do we have any questions on this one? All right, not seeing any questions. We'll see if we have testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners. Kaylee Johnson here with the Historic District's Council. HTC finds this third-story addition to be inappropriate. HTC finds that a third-story addition is neither necessary nor appropriate here. This block has a very intact set of two-story rear yard extensions, making these extensions an architectural feature of this donut. We ask the commission to deny this proposed addition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note that LPC did not receive a resolution from Brooklyn Community Board Six on this application.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard? You can come up to the podium and just state your name, and you're welcome to respond or make any other statements before we move to our discussion.
I mean, a brief response, Dennis Lauer, one of the owners of the building. I guess from our perspective, it is, the visibility is minimal. It is solely visible from Second Street, which is about 120-plus feet away from the actual addition. In addition, we've also had extensive conversations with people in the neighborhood. We went to community boards, hearing, and we've had, you know, universal and we've had, you know, universal approval and agreement from everybody in the neighborhood.
All right, and can, can you just talk about the context again? I know you showed there were other three-story additions within this block as well as other blocks in the district, right? So perhaps we could just go back to that.
I guess the best place to look is the block plan.
Yep. Okay.
So here I can see on this block, as Janelle mentioned, there are three other three-story extensions. Various other ones have roof decks on their existing two-story extension. If you look more broadly in the neighborhood, there are many other places that have three-story extensions. Some of them are original, some of them are not.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, all right, so this is a proposal for a one-story addition on top of an existing rear L. I think it's worth noting that the rear L is not being widened, and it's maintaining its footprint, which is what is found on other buildings in the district, in this block, including other Ls that are three stories shown on the block plan. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you start this one?
Sure. I mean, this is a simple one for me. Adding an additional floor to the same footprint, and multiple two-story additions in the donut, so I find it appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed.
Commissioner Master?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chu?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Lutfi, yeah, and I also would just note that I think this visibility is very fleeting as well.
I would add that being the last house on that row has much less visibility from the neighbors as well.
That's right. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC-25-09319, 534 First Street, Park Slope Historic District, application to enlarge the rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, material and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the Park Slope Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed enlargement of the existing rear yard addition would be only minimally visible from the public thoroughfare from a limited vantage point through a gap in a street wall and in the context of other secondary facades, that other rear yard addition with a similar height and depth exists within the block, and that the proposed vertical enlargement of the existing partial width L will not rise to the full length of the building, maintaining a central building original massing, and will not overwhelm the building adjacent, move on to building adjacent buildings or the central green space, that the design and materiality of the addition features white-painted brick cladding, brick finish, black finish, multi-light windows, and black-finished picket railing will harmonize with the existing white-painted brick facade of the L and the buildings, the L and the buildings, and we've been keeping with the residential scale and character of the building and the road, that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historical character of the building or the Park Slope Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number five, LPC-25-10533, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block 513, lot 7, 142 Greene Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a store building designed by Henry Fernbach and built in 1871. The application is to disassemble and reassemble the cast iron facade, remove the firescape, remove the rear portion of the building and replace the rear facade, modify the rear extension, construct a rooftop addition and excavate the cellar.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Cass Knackelberg Higgins, Queensbarth and Partners. Nice to see you. I'm going to first introduce our, our project team. Myself and the architects will be making the presentation, but the whole team is available for questions at the end of our presentation. So just, it's an impressive group. Joseph Duran from Joseph Duran Architects, Joseph Vance from Joseph Vance Architects, Martin Griggs and Dorian Yurcek from Walter B. Melvin Architects, Nat Oppenheimer from TY Lynn Silman, Valerie Campbell from Herbert Smith Freehills and Kramer, and Douglas Roy from GZA as well. So we're all available to answer questions as we move through, move through the presentation. As Corey summarized, the project that we're sharing with you today is an extensive restoration and adaptive reuse of this five-story cast iron-fronted building. The building is vacant and has been vacant for a number of years, and the project conditions are residential conversion for the building. There is significant restoration work that is needed and contemplated as part of the project, construction of a setback rooftop addition, reconstruction of the rear of the building based on zoning and condition, and excavation and underpinning. The building on the left, you can see it's a five-story fronted cast iron building designed by Henry Fernbach and completed in 1871, obviously located in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. And it's situated on a somewhat a regular lot, 50 feet of frontage on Greene Street. You can see this on the sandbar map on the right. It's 100 feet deep on the north side of the lot and 110 feet deep on the south side, and that's been the footprint of the lot for at least 100 years. An aerial view, just to give you a context of the block in which the building is located, obviously 142 Greene is highlighted in red. It is a block of great variation. Fireman's Hall, which is located here from the 1850s, fronting onto Mercer Street, and there's cast iron and masonry-fronted buildings all the way up to commission-approved designs, new buildings along Houston Street dating to about 2004, as well as a four-story building, commercial building, fronting onto Mercer Street. Looking at the block front along the east side of Greene Street, again, Houston is on the left, Prince Street is on the right, and 142 Greene Street is highlighted at the center. It is an individual building. It is not part of a grouping of other cast iron-fronted buildings similar to the buildings directly to the south. And you see, again, sort of a range. You've got cast iron-fronted buildings from the 1870s and 80s, historic masonry buildings directly to the north. At the far south end of the block is the 1910 post office, a two-story post office, and on the far north end of the block is new construction dating to 2004. Flipping around to the other side of the block, again, Prince Street is on the left, Houston Street is on the right, additional cast iron-fronted buildings. But again, you get a sense of the sort of range of scale and age, this 1825 rowhouse sandwiched in between these much larger cast iron buildings and a smaller masonry-fronted building. New construction as well up on Houston Street, and then historic buildings throughout the balance of the block. Looking at this historic plan on the left, this is a 1923 map, and 142 Greene is highlighted in the solid blue outline. 165 Mercer is highlighted in the dash line, and there's a, this map sort of hints at a very important and interesting historical connection between the two buildings. In the 1920s, they were both used as a paper box factory. But in the research, what's, what becomes clear is that both buildings were designed by Henry Fernbach, both completed in 1871, within about a month or two of one another. You can also see both in the 1920s map, but the current site plan, the sort of a regular configuration of the lot itself, which is relevant particularly in the reconstruction that we're proposing for the, for the rear, for the rear elevation of the building. Owing to the nature of cast iron as a prefabricated material, a material that one could purchase through catalogs, this prefabricated nature allowed replication, obviously. It also allowed for prefabrication and an assembly on site. And what's fascinating about our site and the partner building on Mercer Street is these are two buildings designed by Henry Fernbach that are identical, or at least were originally. On the left is 142 Greene Street, in the middle is 165 Mercer. And then the two images on the right are just details off the facade just to illustrate those precise details that match one another. And this linkage is really unusual and special and is, is, is an assist for the restoration program that we're proposing. 165 Mercer Street, which went through commission review in 2017, a full restoration of the front facade, removal of a firescape that was on the front of that building, and construction of a rooftop addition. The building at 142 Greene Street had a cornice historically, we believe, that matched, and all other aspects matched. But the cornice was, we believe, replaced in the late 1920s at 142 Greene Street. So that cornice at 165 provides us with the information and the detailing to complete a complete restoration. The Commission found in 2017 that the removal of the firescape at 165 Mercer was appropriate, given its impact to the historic facade, that it wasn't as decorative as other ones in the district, and that it was not part of a sort of a grouping of historic cast iron-fronted buildings. We're looking to remove the firescape from 142 Greene Street and in borrowing the cornice details from 165 and removing the firescape, we would be able to sort of, once again, sort of reunite these two buildings that historically matched one another. We think this is an important detail and an important element that will enhance these buildings, the understanding of these buildings and the district as a whole. Returning back to, to the front facade of 142 Greene Street, cast iron-fronted building, you can see the firescape, which extends from the drop ladder on the ground floor with baskets and ladders up to the fifth floor, sort of simple in design, turn balist rails, but fairly simple. It is also doing underlying damage to the, to the facade, which we'll talk about in just a minute. You can see the, the range of windows that have been inserted across the facade historically would have been two over two. Many of those have been changed out over, over time. A bit, and then a rendered view of the project, and I think this is an important view. This, this illustrates the comprehensive restoration of the front facade of the building. It also illustrates a two-story rooftop addition that's set back 23 feet. There's no visibility from directly across the street. There is visibility, as you'll see later in the presentation, only from the north because there's a four-story building to the north. So there's only visibility over that side elevation. But a few, a few key things to point out here that, that we think is really critical to the project, which obviously is the restoration of this significant cast iron-fronted building. So restoration of the cornice based on the detailing at 165 Mercer, restoration of wood windows across the facade, repainting the facade based on historic finish analysis, removing the firescape, which will once again unite this building with its partner at 165 Mercer Street, and then other elements, really the rear, the rear elevation, the, the subsurface work, none of which obviously is visible from the street, and then a rooftop addition that, as I said, is, is set back and visible only from the north. This next image, this is not a view from the street. This is an elevated view at about 30 feet, and we include this really just to illustrate the design relationships between the proposed addition and the facade below. And the idea behind the design, thinking about the sort of modularity of the, of the repetitive facade of cast iron architecture, this addition will be constructed in bronze and glass. The bronze is going to be actually sort of a stick-built system, fastened together, not dissimilar to the way the cast iron facade is sort of assembled in pieces. It plays on the sort of horizontality of the water tables that run at each floor of the cast iron facade, sort of emphasizing the horizontality at the addition and the depth and articulation, which is very important, not only to the cast iron facade, but to, to the addition, the addition above. And then, as I mentioned, there's limited visibility from, from the north, which we'll share a bit later in the presentation. Some detailed photographs, this is a view, obviously, of the firescape on the left, and then the upper floors, the fifth floor and cornice on the right. And a few things just to point out. You can see here in, on the firescape, these straps that anchor back to, to the front facade. This firescape is sitting on these horizontal water tables. The front facade was never designed to take the weight of this, this kind of element, and it's at each floor and is, is causing a certain degree of damage to the underlying facade. And then the image on the right, which just illustrates sort of the condition of the typical cast iron elements, but also this sheet metal cornice that we believe is a replacement from the 1920s, oil canning and very simple in detail, particularly compared to what's, what's on the partner bedroom at 165. In 1928, there was a significant fire in this building. It was actually reported in the, in the New York Times. This talks about the collapse of the upper three floors of the building, and it speaks to the degree of damage. And the physical evidence actually also supports this. We peeled back some of the plaster at the top floor of the building, and you can see charged studs on that floor. And we believe at that time, the cornice was also lost as part of the fire, and this sort of more simple sheet metal cornice was installed. Something also sort of worth noting in this photograph, you're looking at this element here. This is the top of one of the cast iron columns that runs vertically through the building. There is no masonry backup. It is just the cast iron facade, wood studs and plaster. That is, that is the composition, the section of the front facade, which presents its own set of issues. But this documentation sort of helps us understand perhaps some of the conditions, but also the, the sort of history of the cornice. We have looked at this facade very closely, both from the front, but also from the back, removing some of the plaster on the interiors to sort of see the back of this facade. As I mentioned, Walter B. Melvin has been, has been on this project, and they're available to answer any questions about both the conditions, but also the recommendations. But there are a range of deficiencies at this facade from left to right. Cracking, sort of through cracking on the vertical, vertical columns, displacement of some of those columns, the impact of the firescape that I've mentioned, and then also the impact of replacement materials. These three conditions lead the team to recommend a full disassembly of the front facade, restoration off-site, and then reassembly. And while we understand that that's a significant intervention, it is warranted, given these conditions. Off-site restoration affords a degree of flexibility in a controlled environment that can't be done on-site. We're happy to sort of talk more about that. And there are particular conditions as well here that, that lead us to that recommendation. So particularly sort of left to right, the structural columns, all the elements are sort of bolted onto the face of these columns. So these columns, and you'll see in the diagram on the next slide, there are, there are cracks and displacement throughout the facade, from the ground floor all the way up to the fifth floor. So this, this has led a certain degree of water infiltration, which obviously only just sort of exacerbates the problem. The firescape, which I mentioned, sort of was installed on the facade, probably in the 1910s, following the Triangle Shirtwaits Factory fire. The facade was not engineered to support this. But you can also see in this photograph here on the top middle, the way the firescape was attached to the building, there are about 10 different straps at each floor with about seven fasteners per strap, just bolted right through this flat fascia of these water tables. And we, and there are additional photographs and appendix, some of which just show moisture coming in through those penetrations. So there are 70 attachments at each floor on these skyward-facing levels, times four, so 280 alone just for these plates, and then those straps tied back to the facade, about five or 10 more per, per floor. That, of course, over time has brought water into the facades and, and just sort of exacerbates the issue. And then on the far right, this photograph on the top illustrates a fiberglass cap that was installed. There's an approval from 20, from 2001 for what we think was probably intended as a temporary installation to repair and cover water, areas of water infiltration. That, those are still in place, and you can see the photograph on the bottom is sort of from the underside of that where there's plywood, so fiberglass above and plywood above, below. So that as well has, over time, the plywood has cracked, and again, there's water coming into, to the facade. And again, there's water coming into the facade. So the overall approach of this project, in addition to the other changes that we're proposing, this restoration component. Is warranted, we believe, in this location because of these underlying conditions. This elevation, the color-coded elevation, illustrates where these conditions are occurring. The vertical lines obviously are the columns. And I think important first to note, sort of this here, the cracks and displacement, you can see it's occurring at each level. The bright yellow is the damage from the firescape, fiberglass in the bright blue in select locations. And then other deficiencies really spread across this facade. The idea of disassembling the facade really is not, I wouldn't say it's common, but it isn't uncommon. And this is a selection of projects in the historic district where a similar scope of work was carried out. Not necessarily full disassembly, but a similar scope. So one-on-one Spring Street, which some of the team members, including myself and Walter B. Melvin, worked on ten or fifteen years ago. That was a near-full disassembly, all but the cast iron columns remained. All the applied decorative elements, which were just bolted to the columns, those were removed, restored off-site and reassembled. Extensive replacement at twenty-eight and thirty Green Street, and then a bit more selective at fifty-five Broadway. But those upper penthouses, the one to the south, the three-story cast iron fronted penthouse, that was completely disassembled. And there was select removal off the front facade. Also just note that all three of these projects won Lucy Moses Awards. And I think that's in part owing to the quality that can be achieved by actually taking this system apart. It's a system that sort of is almost like an erector set, as you all probably know, but it's made up of component pieces. It was assembled and can be disassembled and can be reassembled with non-Ferris attachments and treatments that allow us to not just treat the front face of the cast iron units. But even the back face, so we can prime and paint all sides of these units and build in the kind of technical improvements to this system. That really, in our instance, really can only be done through full disassembly. Returning back to the conditions of the building, a few additional things to note. The ground floor, a combination of nonhistoric and historic infill. You can see the panels at the base and the columns, those have been simplified. Those are nonhistoric and a combination of replacement doors and some wood infill above. Some detailed photographs illustrating that, the doors and these very flat cast iron panels as part of the overall restoration scope. We'll be reintroducing recessed iron panels into each of the bulkhead panels. The roof, it's comprised of a built-up, simple wood deck, railings, you can see on the photo on the right here. HVAC equipment, skylights and stair and elevator bulkheads on the south side of the roof. From the back of the building, this is looking through a nonhistoric skylight on a one-story extension off the back of the building. The entire back of the building has been coated, it's been parged and coated with a cementitious coating. Historically appears to have had shutters, the shutters no longer remain. It's just the shutter pintles. And really based on the condition of the building, but also sort of the underlying zoning. The proposal will be, as you'll see, to reconstruct this pulled back from the lot line to allow proper light and air and to reconstruct it in a common red brick. Some additional photos on the far left, it's hanging out over the parapet, just looking at the back wall of the facade, just showing the stucco across the upper portion. Looking at one of the, maybe the third or fourth floor window, again, showing the coatings in the middle across the facade. And then the photograph on the far right illustrates this peering over the parapet on the north side. So this is the north-facing side elevation, Green Street is down here. And this is the shorter four-story building directly to the north. The entire north wall has been parged, and our proposal is to take that parging down. And we expect we'll need to replace the outer white of brick on the fourth and fifth floors, this exposed side elevation. Just expecting the underlying brick condition to not be in very good condition, hence the parging. Some historic photographs illustrating just the sort of activity that existed in the nineteen forties. A hint here, this painted wall sign that just indicates the paper box factory that was on-site in the nineteen twenties and perhaps even into the nineteen forties. And then just before Joseph takes you through the design presentation, two pages from Daniel Badger's catalog, cast iron catalog. And I think the idea that there was a catalog where one could purchase facades is really sort of significant. This was a concept of sort of replication and assembly. And the image on the left, this section, was sort of the vision, Badger's vision of what cast iron architecture would be. It wasn't just front facades, but it was also rear facades, and the whole structural system of buildings could be done in cast iron. But he also shows, and this is really ties to the sort of manufacturing use of these buildings. This idea that they were tall cellars and even sub-cellars in many of these buildings. And through the use of vault lights, et cetera, they could be these sort of productive subsurface areas. And these double cellars exist in the district. One-on-one Spring Street has one of these double cellars. And so we're proposing to extend the cellar through excavation. That is both technically feasible, but also appropriate historically. And the image on the right of the Gilsey Building, no longer standing in lower Manhattan, just illustrating a few key themes associated with cast iron architecture. Obviously, the sort of replication and modularity that comes with this sort of repeated design. But also the transparency that comes with these very large glazed planes relative to the sort of simple cast iron solids across these facades. Manufacturing buildings, daylighting was crucial, and this architecture supported those uses historically. Joseph?
Hello, Joseph D'Arone. I'm the architect who finally have the great opportunity to give a new life to this extraordinary building. It's a building that I discovered maybe thirty years ago when I came for the first time in New York. And I remember this as one of my favorite building in New York. So I feel very blessed today to have this opportunity. First of all, of course, it's bringing, there is nothing really to say beside what has been said before. About the fact that we want to restore this building to the maximum, reintegrating this beautiful cornice. We made a quite extensive study about the different layers of painting that appear on the building. So we went back of the time and trying to find all these layers. And this is how we found this original color that was on this building. In combination to reintroduce the dark wood windows, original. And you also see the treatment of the lower floor, the entrance. Where we recentered the doors, symmetrical on both sides. Because today, the door on the lower part is pushed right on the right side. So now the front facade has a great balance. We also see from this elevation, the natural beauty of this facade. I mean, when we know how cast iron was built at that time, you know, this interpretation of even like Venetian architecture and the composition of that. And there is something also, which is constructively very interesting about this, is the fact that it's like a puzzle, you know, a puzzle of pieces that have been prefabricated. The proportion of the windows and the floor, because it's quite high floor. The column in between the window, pretty repetitive and pretty thin. So when we discuss about this idea of creating this extension on the roof. First of all, it was very important for us, and we did a lot of study in order to try to push the setback. In a certain level where we feel that we don't see this building from almost anywhere in the street. We pushed, we did a setback of twenty-three feet in order to achieve that. And so the idea was try to continue the philosophy of how a cast iron building is built. It's prefabricated, it's metal, it's different, it's more contemporary treatment on that. But it followed the same philosophy. We have a line, all the column with exactly the proportion with the column of the existing building. You can see on the extreme left and right that the things are a little thicker, exactly like in the original cast iron building. So we have the feeling of continuity. We are also consistent in terms of proportion and height. And also, it's not only the proportion of plain and transparent. It's also the relation between the vertical and the horizontal. So on the existing building, we have the water table, it's almost like a cornice. That create this separation, strong ornamental separation between the different floors. And we reintroduce a little bit this idea with this horizontal that we mark on the elevation and you will see on the rendering. And also the fact that we push a little bit the facade, a little more, about three feet back to enhance this horizontal vision. Okay, here. Here it's the rendering and the existing picture, the difference with the reintroduction of the cornice. We see how beautiful this cornice is. And also, of course, the removal of this fire steel that enhance the beauty of the ornamental, this ornamental facade. On the rear facade, the rear facade is basically, we try to do as maximum as those facade of those building was almost like the back of a decor, of a theater decor. It's a plain brick facade with exposed lintel in bluestone. And then in terms of materiality, the wind on all existing is wooden windows, same color as the main facade. And basically, the extension is a complete old bronze metal structure, which include the cladding, the column, the windows. And we have actually some samples, and I'm actually sharing with you. Because, so yeah, so there is a complete unity of materiality. And this, what is nice about, we try also to create some paint sample that give the charm of the, so you have the paint of the facade. And you see the bronze, I mean, the profile of the window is quite impressive. And the bronze is not just paint, it has something that has a patina, some very beautiful materiality. So here you see also from the back facade, we have decided also to mark this horizontality. That we also push the facade a little of the extension, a little bit back. To also create this setback from the back facade. And here you see the idea of the cladding, because you have the part where you have the windows. And even on the side of this extension, where we don't have window, we create the same rhythm of partition. And we create this kind of louvers element that remind a little bit the plank of wood. But we still have a constant rhythm all around the building.
Joe Vance, Joseph Vance Architects. We've got a series of the technical drawings here. I know we've got a lot to present, some of these I'll skip through, absolutely interrupt me if you have a question. Existing facade. Close facade. Close rear facade. And again, you'll see in plan, when we get to the plans, it's in two sections. This is, as Cass described, we have an offset rear property line. So we're providing our zoning setback, which gives us a bifurcated rear facade. This is the north elevation, as mentioned previously. The portion of the facade above the building to the north will probably remove the outer white of the three-white brick wall. And use the same common brick that's being passed around on this side. Couple of lotline windows move, a couple get closed and a few new ones. And then otherwise, as Joseph mentioned, any place where there are not windows, there are still articulated bronze panels to cover the side of this building. And then on the very top, those panels become mechanical screens. South facade, only visible. This is the existing building section, and one thing I want to point out. But if you look at the profile of the existing top floor, the ceiling heights range from eleven foot seven oh and fifteen foot ten in the front. And you can see there's an existing very tall cellar in this project. The post section, so there's a good bit of information here that's important. So you'll see that the fifth floor we're proposing now has a level twelve-foot ceiling. That the floor-to-ceiling heights of the two new floors are eleven feet. The reason, there's a big thick band in between the two, technical reasons, the front terrace, by the time we have the paver is a place for water, all the exterior insulation, then the steel beams and the deck. And then we're putting mechanical equipment and ductwork in that same space, that's why that's so thick. But important items, you'll see we're well within our zoning envelope here. The maximum building height permitted is a hundred and forty-five feet, we're a hundred and six feet seven inches. The zoning setback is fifteen feet, we're set back twenty feet ten inches from the property line, twenty-three feet from the cornice. In the rear, the new SNX zoning is a twenty-foot rear yard as opposed to the thirty-foot that we're all used to. We're actually setting back twenty-seven feet at the new portions above. So a greater setback than is required. Then we're taking that very tall cellar that you saw that's existing, sharing some of that and going down slightly below that to create a subcellar. So in this section, you'll see in red, red is excavation. It doesn't go all the way to the rear of the new building. There's a portion that's only three feet of excavation in the rear. There's another slide coming up. It does get deeper at the elevator pits, and I'll show you that in a different. This is just a blown-up section through the two new floors. You'll see in back, Joseph referred, that the rear facade of the addition is set back two feet from the new rear masonry facade. And then you see the setbacks on the front, and the top, the very top is mechanical equipment. A blow-up of the north elevation. In this, you'll see the sixth floor is full width, the seventh floor is only half of the width of the building. And to the left of that is an open terrace. And then above that is mechanical equipment and mechanical screening. The mechanical screening is required by zoning. North elevation of just the addition. South elevation of the addition. For elevation of the addition, again with that terrace shown. This is just some detailing based on the sample that you see here. You'll see the articulation, the image on the right, you can see how the bronze articulation of the columns. You know, the existing cast iron columns are obviously half-round. This is a more modern interpretation to give some detail and some shadow. And this image on the left is the detailing of those panels, they're ribbed panels. Wherever the wall is solid on the right, you can see a section through this horizontal element that's a modern interpretation of the water table. Again, casting shadow in this facade as it would have originally had. And this is to try to explain what's continuing to remain of the existing building. So the walls in yellow are existing masonry walls to remain. You'll see on the fourth and fifth floors, the little blue, that represents the replacement of the outer white of brick with new brick. On the left, the green, the front facade as described, would be dismantled temporarily, taken off-site to be restored and brought back and reassembled. Floor plans, the upper one, again, describes the excavation. The light gray is the portion that's nine foot three of excavation. The next tone of gray is a deeper excavation, that's a whole technical reason, which can be described related to those elevator pits. That does get filled back up to the same level, requires this deeper mat for support. And below that floor plan. This is the level above floor plan, existing and proposed. This is the, uh, existing rooftop on the upper and the sixth floor below. So you can see clearly in this one, the front terrace. And then you can see how this is set back 27 feet from the, the stepped rear property line. Um, the upper plan, the proposed seventh floor, uh, which is half the width of the building. It's actually predominantly, uh, two stairs, two elevators coming up, um, vestibule and then some user space uh, related to the residential behind that. And then on the very rooftop, uh, mechanical equipment that's screened. Turn it back to Cass.
Um, so this diagram illustrates, um, sort of where our, our visibility studies are taken from. And I think it's sort of worth just spending a moment looking at this because I think it's clear. Uh, there are a handful of, uh, close in views, um, from really only from the northwest. And there's no visibility from, as I said, directly across the street or from the south. Um, they're close in views, which we'll, we'll share with you in a minute. And then there's a very long view, sort of through silver towers, sort of dissociated from the building. Um, but we, we represent that, um, in, in this di- uh, series of images. Um, so this is the, the first view. So again, you know, as you move north, um, and, uh, you've, you've passed the front of the building where it's not, uh, where the addition is not visible, uh, because of the height of the adjacent building, um, you're seeing just the, the corner of, uh, of that sixth floor, uh, addition. And again, we've sort of spoken about the articulation and the, the ideas behind the addition and the relationship, uh, from a design perspective, from the underlying, uh, facade of the building with, uh, with this proposed addition. Um, as one moves up, um, up the street, you're catching, this is kind of moment on the street where you're catching the corner of the upper floor. Uh, and, and the angle of the, uh, the adjacent floor. And again, all these views are over, uh, over this plain, um, side elevation. Um, and then, um, coming across Houston Street, um, again, there's this sort of moment here between the taller building, uh, to the north and then the new construction facing onto Houston Street where you're seeing, uh, the, the top level of the addition and sort of interesting sort of volume metrics and the sort of relationship of that, um, sort of rectilinear volume with, uh, sort of similar rooftop features and pavilions at the top of the, uh, red, uh, brick facade of the historic building and even the, the new construction, uh, that fronts, uh, fronts onto Houston Street. Uh, and then, as I mentioned, there is, uh, one very long view. Um, so again, this is, you know, if, if you're standing at just the right moment on, on the south side of Bleecker Street, seeing through the trees, there is, um, there is some visibility here. But again, um, it, it's sort of lost in the trees and, and, and a bit difficult to sort of associate it with the underlying, uh, the underlying facade. Um, for reference, we, we, you know, we've talked a bit about 165 Mercer Street already. Um, the commission approved a visible rooftop addition, uh, at that building. It was visible, uh, in, like, in large part because of the lower building directly to the side. Sort of similar in condition to what we have at 142 Green Street. And of course, with that approval came the restoration and the removal of the firescape at 165 Mercer. And then two other, uh, cast iron front buildings, the one in the middle and the one to the right, both individual landmarks. Um, the building at the center, um, 827 Broadway, uh, sort of a different approach to the design based on the history of that building and the studio uses, uh, within that building. But the building on the right, uh, 361 Broadway, I think we, it's sort of a, a significant, uh, reference. But this was a, a very visible two-story addition, uh, that the commission approved back in 2012. Uh, this is an individual landmark, um, with a very sort of, uh, orthogonal, sort of simple, uh, clean, uh, addition. Uh, open at the, the lower level of the addition and glazed at the upper. Uh, but in terms of, uh, of its relative visibility considerably, uh, considerably more visible than, uh, than what we're proposing uh, for this district building in Green Street. And then we included this photograph, uh, really just for context. So these are a few aerial photographs within the Soho, uh, cast iron historic district. Um, 38 Green Street on the left, this is a, a very, uh, it's a, a large corner building with a very large two-story addition. A limited visibility for sure, but just to give you a sense of the kind of, um, additions that have been approved over time. The commission has found adapting these buildings for residential use for, uh, that come along with additions and restoration, uh, that that can be appropriate within this district. And then, um, this view, uh, on the right, which is a, a view along Green Street. This is directly sort of one block to the south of the project site, just showing it, this sort of range of one and two-story additions. Um, this, this grouping of buildings here, um, 93 to 99, also by Henry Fernbach and the buildings directly to the north, 101 and 107. Um, those also were designed by Henry Fernbach. You can see setback two-story additions there, uh, and then two-story additions here. This very tall one-story addition with a swimming pool across the street. So, um, this is really just to show that there, there's kind of a whole other world on the, at the roofscapes of these buildings throughout the district, um, where you have these incidental views, um, not dissimilar to what, um, what we're proposing at 142 Green Street. So just in, in summary, um, the restored facade, as one sees it, um, from across the street directly, no visibility of a rooftop addition, but addition that's been designed really with a relationship to the underlying, uh, historic facade, both in terms of its organization and modularity, uh, the, 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 the metal and glass architecture, this sort of stick built, um, fastened system, um, visibility, which, which we would characterize as limited, only from the north. Uh, a material palette that sort of speaks to both the material and color palette of, of the underlying restored front facade. Uh, and then the restoration scope, um, this in, this building, given its underlying conditions, we think, uh, it is warranted to, to disassemble this facade, restore it comprehensively offsite and reassemble it. It's a, it's a, uh, technique that has been done to a certain degree in other locations in the district. And we think is, is warranted, uh, in this location. And I think just thinking more broadly, sort of restoring the cornice, removing the firescape, bringing this building back into its, 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 uh, partnership with 165, uh, Mercer Street, uh, and all of these restoration components will ensure the long-term preservation, uh, of this important landmark. And we are all here to, uh, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
As you were explaining the deconstruction of the cast iron facade, you were mentioning that there's no masonry backup wall. Um, can you explain a little bit about how the process? It is surgery work and, um, totally understood that this is a system of prefabricated elements that, that essentially created a, uh, an assembled facade onto something that's already got structural stability. So when you said there was no masonry wall, can you explain how, what is holding up the facade? And also how will the process, I guess, phasing of removals, uh, reduce risk of pieces falling off or, uh, potentially, um, um, I don't know. I guess there could be hazardous materials, like there could be some need for, um, for removals and safety around removals. So.
So I'm, I'm going to play MC. Um, I could.
Yeah, no, no, yes. Yeah.
To, to respond and, and we're all available. So.
And are there any special techniques you use to, to help do this?
I think it's important to understand, right, the, uh, Martin Griggs from Walter Melvin Architect. Um, I think it's important to understand in, in, in the, in, in kind of the conditions that we saw, right? We've got cast iron columns that actually do support the floor levels in the building, right? And on that is all the cladding assembled on those. The way that, that it's configured, the, the base plates, they really didn't cast base plates into the, into the cast iron. So we're having a lot of butt-to-butt connections and we're seeing splitting at those connections. And I kind of liken it to, I mean, if you broke your leg, right? You'd want to be able to fix your leg by being able to take your pants off and lie down and fix the leg. You don't want to have to do that under load. And so that really, we don't have a lot of, I mean, it's possible, it's just, you're not going to get a good, as good a fix. And so what really what we're, we're stuck with is we have a series of these issues at the columns. And really, you know, the benefit here for us is we've gotten great access to the interior of the building and bucket truck inspections. So we have a very good idea what's going on both sides of this facade. And so really what you would be end up doing is dismantling, top to bottom, cataloging. We've already started working on naming drawings and all of that stuff. Um, cataloging those units as they come out to get back to those cast iron pieces and then take those apart. There's a whole, um, work that's being done on the interior to shore. And, and as that happens, right, the floors and then to go back with this, with the system to support the floors. It's actually separate from our cast iron components that will go back, uh, basically applied to those, those, those floors.
So you take off the cladding after you've catalogued from top to down. Then you go back and do whatever reparations is existing cast iron structure might need.
The structure will actually be, be, we, we will actually be shoring up the floors. Um, and we will be taking off those structural columns off the building and repairing them also.
As well.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because you can't really do it under load. We really need to, we really need to introduce bearing plates at those connections. Because, because this condition with cast iron is just not a great idea. Um, and you can see in those pictures, right? Some of that shifted. We don't know if that's from the fire and the falling of the floors. Or if it's just, you know, cast iron often has a way of, of, the facades have a way of shifting. And they have a way of kind of redistributing loads through the cladding even. So it, you know, to, to try to deal with it at a, a column by column location is, is not the best idea.
Um, related to the structure, the addition that's being added to the roof, which is essentially three stories of height. How is that structured needling through this?
And I'm going to pass you over.
All right, Nat.
Uh, Nat Oppenheimer with you, Island Silman. So yeah, also just building on the facade, just so people understand, and this is very typical. The facade is, has been said as carrying load, most of it's its own load. There's a center girder that runs and comes into one of the columns, but the rest is basically its own load. And the existing structure spans north, south to that girder and to the two walls.
Self-supporting load.
Self-support. And in the process of doing this, you know, there'll be a full shoring diagram as well. So in fact, the building is probably more structurally laterally stable during the construction than it is now in terms of what the cast iron facade contributes. In addition, we are adding back within that core, a seismically capable core. So this building, when it is done, will be up to code, modern code. Um, and we'll be able by disassembling, which we did at Queen of Green, which was shown in a number of other buildings, to come back with more appropriate clip systems to hold the facade on so that there's no load basically imparted onto the cast iron facade going forward. And there's a lot less chance that in the future, any loads will impart on that facade, other than its own self-weight.
You mean from the building behind?
From the building behind. I'm just saying. So no, it really becomes a facade at that point. Yeah.
Okay.
But in a, but in a way that really serves its purpose lasting onward. And, and again, similar to the restoration, not to pile on or, or oversell. But, you know, the, the ability to take it off and come back with those types of clips and everything is a lot easier to do than if we were trying to do it in place with the different levels.
Okay. And, and Nat, the structure needling through for the rooftop additions, how does that work?
Majority of the load will be on that core and we're keeping the center girder idea. So we're retaining the basic bones of the building supported at the, the two side walls, which are to remain, but we're going to shed some load off of those to new posts against those walls and in the core. And so, and there's a moment frame behind the cast iron that will serve for lateral as well. So basically it's a combination of the existing unreinforced masonry and a new steel frame, basically, that will support the building up to modern code loads.
And doing the sub cellar as opposed to shelving over, going directly below and underpitting those two neighboring facades was decided to be the, the, the right way to go with this?
Well, the, the, the two property line facade, the two property line, one's an independent wall, one's a party wall.
Okay.
Are, are being underpinned for a portion of it. The section that we showed is coming back off the rear wall. But, but the width of the underpinning, and Doug can speak to the precise degree, but it's, you know, we, we have good soils. It's actually in an area of Soho that's not the traditional marshy area. The north end is actually up a bit on a, on a reasonable knoll. So it's not the typical Soho soils and Doug can speak more directly to that. But, but from a, again, not to dismiss it, but from a Soho underpinning job, it's probably in one of the better locations than all of Soho in terms of stability of soil and so on.
Uh, Douglas Roy from GZA. Nat, Nat also is, uh, stanted as by Geotech Engineer Winston Williams. Uh, yeah, this area of the Soho is in a sandy portion. Uh, we don't have the bull's liver uh, and similar silpy material that is known, uh, down around Canal Street. Um, so we're in very good shape for underpinning. Uh, we're just, uh, generally at the water table or just below the water table. We've taken some very conservative approaches, uh, for this project, given what we're talking about here. Conservative methodology, uh, including which contractors we're going to use.
Do piles have to go down deeper?
Yeah, so there are, are going to be piles that are going to be used as a temporary support for the temporary structure in general. Um, and then most of the load is being shed, as Nat said, on the north and south walls. The south wall is a party wall and the north wall is an independent wall. There is, uh, but the piles generally, there are going to be some uplift piles. We're going to be below the groundwater table at the, uh, elevator core. Um, so uplift there we're going to need to deal with. Uh, but for the most part, the, the piling that we, we are showing on this project is under the center core on a temporary basis, uh, for these new center beams to go.
And not on the perimeter edges of it. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other guests, Commissioner Goldblum, followed by Commissioner Mastor.
Probably for Melvin or Nat. I, I, or, we're not, do we plan, do we figure that there's going to be any loss of original material on the cast iron? And are you, are you going to be replacing the fiberglass stuff with cast iron?
So Martin Griggs from Ultermelon again. Um, so yeah, we're replacing all of the lost material. Um, you know, when we, we did 101 Spring Street, um, with this kind of methodology of full removal, we were actually able to salvage more material because it gives us a chance to deal with units at the shop, right? So like welding repairs, things like that, we can preheat, we control the cooldown. We can do a lot of things with the cast iron that we can't do in the field. Um, we've got problems at the sills where we've got some, um, some, uh, basically some settlement at the back of the sills that are causing back pitching. We think that in the shop, we'll be able to kind of heat that, bend it back into shape and then reinforce it. So it just gives us a lot more options. So the, the goal is to retain as much material as possible, um, repairing where we can, restoring where we can. Um, and then obviously all the, 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 the lost material we're going to be replacing.
Thanks. All right.
I can just add to that too. As part of, as part of the, this process going forward, we expect to work very closely with the staff, like every step of the way, so that we know which units, once this is been disassembled, which units can be repaired, which would have to be replaced in kind, et cetera. So this would be a, an ongoing process.
That question is to you. Comments, it, it, it sounds like the staff is concerned that that might not really be the best way to go.
I think myself or Cory, uh, you know, we've looked at this and we've talked about it with, with, um, you know, with council as well. You know, there is always just some concern when you're removing the entirety of the cast iron facade. And is that the right approach? And I think part of the discussion here and, and for you as commissioners and myself hearing it now to decide it on is with, with this big team of experts is, is this the right approach? And, you know, we're all listening and hearing it to us.
Concern is, is specifically related to breakage or loss. Where does the worry come from?
Uh, the, the last part again?
Where does the concern come from? Much, you know, apart from the, the philosophical notion of taking apart the building. Uh, what are you worried about specifically?
I think it's largely philosophical, to be, to be honest. It is, I think, I think we're confident that the team can, can disassemble it and put it back on. But, you know, there have been cases in the past where, you know, there have been issues of building materials going away and being in a warehouse for many years and, and new work. Um, so, you know, we just want to ensure that what comes down goes back up.
Thank you.
And Commissioners.
Sounds like a reasonable request.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So. And Commissioners, we, we are working with the applicant to put together escrow agreements so that there will be monitoring and, and, you know, milestones of once it's removed, when it comes back. And so we're, we're going to be monitoring that closely and, and there'll be financial issues as well.
All right. Commissioner Mastor.
So I, I had two questions and my first question was exactly that. Um, when you were, um, thinking about the restoration of the cast iron, why did you choose to do all of it at once versus rotating parts of it, um, you know, on a basis?
I think part of the issue is where the deficiencies are occurring. And that color-coded diagram, which is showing cracking even at the first floor, to do this in a piecemeal fashion would not result in sort of a repaired facade. And I think the idea is sort of, it needs to be done holistically and at one time. Um, and also just sort of address philosophically, absolutely. The idea of sort of disassembling an entire facade is a little sort of breathtaking. But again, thinking first of all about the material itself and that's sort of inherent in, in the, the fact that this facade came together in pieces and can, you know, be disassembled carefully and reassembled. But sort of in terms of scope, um, you know, Marty worked at 101 Spring Street, which I'm not sure as a percentage, sort of how much of that facade came off, but perhaps 18?
All the cladding.
All the cladding. So the, the process there is very similar and the, and the reasoning is very similar to what we have here. Here it's just the columns are in very bad condition and those need to be addressed as well. So that's what precipitates the, the, the approach that we're. So that's what precipitates the, the, the approach that we're, that we're proposing.
Great. And then my second question was, what is the use? Is it 100% residential? And is it multifamily or a single family?
Single family with commercial use on a portion of the ground floor.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Lutfi. Oh. All right, Commissioner Lutfi, followed by Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah, just to close the loop on this other conversation. So how long does this process take to replace a facade? And the end, I mean, it's gonna be exposed. What do you do?
Let me have Marty answer that.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna, I mean, in terms of the exposure, right? You're gonna have to build a temporary wall in front of it, right? It's gonna have, it's gonna have scaffolding in front of it to take it down, right? So that's gonna be the first kind of weather barrier, and then there's gonna be another weather barrier that gets built behind it. We think the restoration of the facade is probably about a year process, maybe a little bit quicker. We're hoping we can squeeze it a bit, but that's kind of where we're, you know, what we're anticipating.
Thank you.
During that process, again, sort of engagement with the staff, you know, if it's, if it's inspections or however we want to do that, that's sort of anticipated so that they're frequent check-ins, like yes, everything is still at the restoration shop, and here are the pieces. And so however, you know, we all determine we wanna do that, we'll follow the staff.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jefferson.
So this is actually, I, I, I can't speak typical because I, you've worked on only a handful of buildings throughout the district, but this is actually a layer, and we've shared this with the staff. This, this color is, is the earliest finished color, this quiver tan. It's a commercial match, we pass this around. It's actually the color that, that this facade was painted. It's based on that, yeah.
Thank you.
It's darker than you'd expect in.
To us as well.
When the cast iron is meant to look like a limestone or marble. Okay, any other questions?
The storefront's gonna be unoccupied by retail, right?
Uh, no, there's, the northern half is commercial.
Oh.
The southern half is entry.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, let's move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you after that. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Yes. All right, are you with the applicant team or? Okay. Okay, we'll try to speak louder. You can come up to the podium here. We've just turned the microphone on and state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
So my name is Bogdan Gabono. I, I'm the president of the co-op of the, the two buildings actually, you know, co-op, the one that abuts to the north and then another building, which is, in which I live. I'm also, I'm a longtime member of CB2 in Manhattan, and I'm on the zoning and the landmarks committee. And I thank what you guys do. I, it's very, it, it's very impressive to see you guys working. I've been here before, and it's a, it's a tremendous job, and I'm glad you're doing it. In general, I would just like to say that we, we, I mean, I could speak for myself as the president of the co-op. We do applaud this project. It's a very, it's, 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 it's really a very well-done, I think. It looks like it's gonna be well-done, but it's, it's, it's something that is very good for the neighborhood. I like to see the restoration. I'm very happy that it's happening. We do have some concerns. One, excavation and underpinning are words that make me very nervous. And I have two of my fellow co-op members who live directly next door. Underpinning is a really scary word. The, let me also say that I did reach out to the group, and they did get back to me, and they tried to assure me that they will work with us, and I'm glad that they did, and that they will pay for our experts and lawyers and stuff. So we're happy to work with them. But underpinning, very concerning to us. We also want, we want retail. I'm not sure how many bays you're proposing that the retail will be because I think it's a little odd the way you move the, the doors. Because typically in Soho, there's a residential entrance usually on one end, one side, and then the rest of the, of the street level is, is some kind of, some kind of windows with a door somewhere in there. It looked to me like you're proposing half for a residential lobby and half for retail. Can somebody answer that, or should I wait? Or how do you wanna? What? Oh, okay, okay. We think that it's very important for the streetscape and for Soho in general for there to be no, no missing tooth from the line of stores. So we do want retail. We think it's very important for the, for the street, as I just said. Now we get to the rooftop addition, which, you know, presented is, looks great. I must say, it looks very nice. It's, it's a lot. It is really a lot. I can't tell how much, you did mention the, the number of feet that is set back. I, I didn't really internalize all of that. You know, I wonder in such a huge building, why you need two more stories on top of it? But okay, that's, you know, the owner's preference. The photos, you know, somewhat accurate, but the ones that, you can actually see the, the addition from Green Street right in front of the building. You do have to move back very close to the building across the street, but you do see it. So the photo that was presented, it, you know, it's not an attempt to be tricky, but the fact is, when you look up from Green Street, you can see the rooftop addition. Across Houston, it's quite prominent. You know, you, you might argue that you have to be looking for it, but it is there if you're walking down the street.
I'm so sorry, we have a three-minute limit if you don't mind summarizing the remainder of your testimony.
Okay, another slow, okay. So you, how many minutes did you say? One minute, no minutes?
It's a three-minute total limit that you're approaching.
All right, so those are the issues, retail, underpinning, makes me nervous when, when I say the word, and the rooftop addition. Those are, those are our major issues. On the rooftop addition, I, I think maybe you could put the HVAC on the back of the building instead of way on top. I mean, you keep stacking stuff on top, you're gonna get a higher rooftop addition, right? Okay, that's it. Those three issues are my issues.
All right, thank you. We also have another speaker who signed up, Lynn. And forgive me if I mispronounce this.
Guest choir.
Guest choir, thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I live in the little building that could, the 146 building next door where I've lived 57 years. And the reason we went there initially as artists was for the light from our lovely tin skylights, which of course will be blocked terribly with the height of the buildings next door. So I just question why it's a single occupancy residence needing so much space on the roof. It seems a little extravagant if you're considering your neighbors. And other than that, wonderful job you've all done in presentation. Absolutely beautiful. Thank you.
Yes, would you like to come up and speak as well? Please come to the podium and, yeah, just state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Co-op officer and longtime member, former CB2 member. I just wanted to, to just share this view, a little piece of history that I, I did save. I'm in the, the building next to Lynn. So there's the subject building, there's Lynn, and then the building that I'm in. I happen to be on one half of the top floor. And I do remember, like yesterday, we had quite a, a time trying to preserve the, the view of the sunset, the view of NYU right near across the street. And the developer really wanted to come up very high with those new condos on, which had replaced the parking lot on Houston. But I, I, I do remember one of the structures, a person, she lives there now, I've become very good friends with her, but that one of the structures was a wooden fellas of sorts and a lot of flowers. But you could see it clearly from across, across the street if you're in that NYU brass planted area, which a lot of us walks in going to the grocery store. But, and we did, I, I don't know how formal the complaint was, but I really did report it. And they, they modified that. They got rid of, oh, the other thing, actually, we're a, we're, we're a timber building, so we are much more susceptible to fire, and I am especially. I've had the fire department come a couple times with well-intentioned neighbors calling. And it's not, not fun at 2:00 in the morning. But at any rate, that's not the point here. But the point was just this, they were sensitive, landlords, you guys, were sensitive enough that this person had to change all that. And then I had to go at it again, it was a real coincidence, when I, I'm retired, basically, from the Wall Street Journal and ABC. I'm a Vietnam veteran, where, where veterans at. But at any rate, it, it was just curious to have someone do this amount of work. So once the complaint went, I guess this was the DOB, the stickers were put on the building. And I said to the super of the 22th Houston, I said, "I would love to speak with whoever, whoever's in charge of this." Because I actually saw a workman bringing huge outdoor grills that just as if they're... And I have to admit, as a citizen, I've read what you all have read over time. Somebody's marketing a building, it has roof lights, this outboard says, "And your imagination." And I said to this woman, I said, "That's nonsense." You've got all these people living below you, you've got people living next door to you. At any rate, that's, so that one was modified, and we just like some consideration given. Because to see these things can, can be constructed and be looked upon as if it's an island, with your imagination. No, you need to consider your neighbors too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, Stephen Thompson, to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, those joining us, I assume. Those joining us, I assume, who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function, after which you will be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the Victorian Society supports some of the proposed work. This includes removal of previously installed fiberglass infill and the replacement and repair of deteriorated cast iron elements on the street facade. We also accept the installation of new painted wood windows and storefronts, but we note that there are no details or dimensions shown for the existing or new windows and only minimal detail for the replacement storefronts. Full sets of both must be provided. But we question aspects of this proposal. The applicant is proposing to remove, move the historic fire escape. They are showing, they are showing photos of the similar Fernbach Building at 165 Mercer, which no longer has fire escapes as justification for its removal at 142. However, the existing fire escape, shown in the tax photos on Board 21, it is well-detailed. It is over 100 years old, and it is in a district where fire escapes were added after the Triangle Shirtwaist Factory and are typical. It should be retained. The tax photos also show the historic cornice, which is still in place. This is simpler than the cornice at Fernbach's design at 165 Mercer. However, it is, as it is visible in the tax photo, it should be retained. It should not be replaced just because Fernbach used a more elaborate design at another building. Cast iron buildings were constructed from a kit of parts, and unless there's evidence that cornices originally matched Fernbach's choice for, this one should be left alone. We also question the applicant's request to remove the entire rear facade. There's a lot of historic masonry, as well as the historic, historic fire shutter hinges to be destroyed. And we are, sorry, we were startled by the applicant's unusual proposal to disassemble and rebuild an historic, an entire historic cast iron facade. Now, we know that these facades were designed as individual parts which were assembled on site, but this material has now been in place for 154 years. Cast iron is brittle. We must ask how much original material will be left intact after the disassembly? When we add up the removal of windows, storefronts, fire escape, cornice, the entire rear facade, and the possible destruction of the original cast iron, the preservation mandate seems to have been lost. This is not appropriate. Finally, we urge that the visible two-story rooftop addition, which will increase the overall height of the building by 31% from 110 feet to 145 feet, be reduced. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us, I assume, who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Being known, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends mixed approval, recommending denial of the design of the penthouse. An LPC received a letter from one individual recommending denial.
All right, thank you. And I'll, I'll turn to you in a moment to respond, but I do wanna note for the people who have testified about concerns with the excavation work, and, and I expect you'll hear from the team more on that, and hopefully going forward, to the extent that there's an approval here. But I do wanna assure you that, that we are also requiring enhanced engineering review of this application. So we will be with our own engineer and with the Department of Buildings, working closely with an applicant team for any proposed engineering. All right, so now I'd like to turn back to the applicants and ask you to respond to any comments we've heard.
Yeah, I have some responses to some of the testimony on design, but I'd actually like Doug to address the, the underpinning and that subsurface scope first. Just, and then I'll, I'll conclude with a few comments.
Douglas Roy again from GZA. Responding on the underpinning concern, we personally, or I've personally done probably 50 or 60 underpinning jobs in similar materials and similar here. We're lucky here that we have very good subsurface conditions. When underpinning doesn't go right, you're correct. It is, it's, it's upsetting and not the right thing to do. But we've assembled a team here that is very capable on this project, and we're approaching it at a very conservative method.
So just, just to respond to a, a few, a few points, I think I'd like to address the visibility issue. So this, this image and the views that we have is, are from the public way. I, I can scroll back to, to the previous slide, but the buildings across the street have three steps sort of set into the property line. The, the rule of thumb always is six-foot camera from the property line. So if you step on the risers across the street within the property line, there is a peak of visibility. I actually haven't seen that, but I stood across the street, and there, there is no visibility from the public way with your back at the property line. So I do wanna mention that. And then just a, a few notes, the ground floor infill and the windows in particular, the existing windows, there's a, a range of different configurations, but we know historically that they were two-over-two, consistent with other buildings of the 1870s throughout the district. We'll be working with the staff on the detailing of those windows and all the storefront infill. That scope really is restorative in nature and is handled by the staff, and that's why those details are not in this, in this presentation. The, the rear elevation, you know, we've talked a bit about that. I think both from a zoning perspective to provide legal light and air, but also from a conditions perspective, this rear elevation has been coated, stuccoed, and, and coated with a cementitious material. The commission often sees this on row houses and approves the reconstruction of buildings, rear elevations in those instances where the underlying conditions are very similar. Obviously, this is a larger building, but, but a similar set of circumstances. And then finally, I think just in terms of engagement, this, this team is, is very much committed to engaging with the neighbors on both sides of, of this property. They have, they have been in conversations with the neighbors, and they continue to be. They've made themselves available, phone numbers, emails, and will continue throughout, throughout the project's construction.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Goldblum?
Could we go to the floor plan page? I just wanted to ask about the storefront issue that was raised in the testimony. Go to the next, the one back, the lower portion, the yellow and the green. Keep on going. Keep on going. Bingo. So, first floor plan, where's the retail?
It's up in this half of the...
What are all those little rooms? That's, is this retail already predetermined? We know who it's going to be and all?
We do not know.
So, the idea is that there's going to be little rooms of retail?
That's how it's currently drawn. We don't know what the tendency will be at this point of the project, that, you know, we haven't even sort of begun that piece of it, so.
And is the retail going to be related to the homeowner? Is it going to be like, I don't know, it doesn't sound really our thing, so, I don't know, just...
How many units is...
I can speak, Valerie Campbell from HSF Kramer. We are subject to the streetscape regulations, which limits the amount of residential and requires, that I believe in this case, it's 50% of the frontage be non-residential, and that's what we will, what is being proposed here, but as I said, there are no tenants yet. Interior configuration could change as well, so.
But the intention is to do that space as retail, it's open to the public for sale of things that are for sale.
The intention is it will be complying commercial space. That may or may not be retail.
Right. So, if I have a home office, I could put my home office there?
I don't think a home office would...
Or something, something like that. Something that's bigger than a home office, but my personal, whatever. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other final questions? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we're going to discuss this application now, and I do want to say for guidance, but also mostly for the public, the Commission does not have the jurisdiction to regulate light, air, or use. And we, so we, our discussion will be about the appropriateness of the architectural changes that are proposed, and we won't be discussing light and air and use, except to the extent that those uses require modifications, and then we'll look at the modifications to the building that accommodate those uses. And so, in this case, we will be looking at the removal of the fire escape, and as the applicants have laid out, it's caused some damage to the facade, and it is simply designed and not part of a row, which are all considerations we've factored in when we've looked at other proposals to remove fire escapes, to disassemble the cast iron facade, to perform off-site restoration and reassemble it, the removal of the rear facade to provide the legal light and air that is needed for residential use, and a two-story plus mechanical room penthouse, which has some oblique views and some long-distance views, and some excavation mostly around the elevator core, but in other areas as well, but to a lesser depth. And we've heard from all members of the team on all aspects of this, and so hopefully we have enough information to provide comments now. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Sure. So, this proposal essentially has two big pieces to it. One is the existing building and the approach to renovation and restoration of the Green Street facade, and then there's the rooftop addition. In terms of the existing building and the approach towards restoration by deconstruction, storage, relooking at the building, I feel that this team is very skilled, and the consultants are all, they're seasoned, and, you know, I've been involved with projects similar where this degree of intervention or underpinning has been required, and I'm sure that that's going to be something that LPC continues to monitor. You know, the design intent for this portion, I think, is sound, and it will be about execution. And so, as we've seen in the past, it's just really important that what was designed and improved is in fact is the method and the approach in the construction of the project. So, the approach because of the, essentially, I'm not sure what will be left from this description of what's happening. It sounds like most of the structure will be removed, including the floors and the rear facade to some extent. And this approach was, we've seen applications where applicants have kept the majority of the existing building structure and material, and made intervention and added to it, and I don't think this is the wrong approach. They took the full-on approach to bring this building up to a current standard and really refine and restore this facade. The explanation, I think, was pretty detailed. The approach, I think, sounds correct. It's not something that's done that often, but it's a big endeavor that they've taken on. Wonderful to see that somebody do this and restore this building. I think that's something I should mention first off the bat. In terms of the actual proposals themselves, there is historic precedent in terms of their analysis of the paint color. It does appear a bit dark to me in the renderings. I do think that's something that needs to be explored a little further, and the effect to the streetscape in terms of tonality and darkness. I feel that the details, as was explained, would be further followed up on the exact conditions of the window types that can be worked out with staff. Yeah, I think that in terms of removing the fire escape, it was really presented as a way of explaining how the fire escape was a retrofit and wasn't done in a sensitive way to the way the building was originally detailed and built. I can follow that. I can see rationale behind that. If they're taking this thing apart and rebuilding it, I'm not so sure this approach merits to retain that fire escape, because that would also be removed and rebuilt and reattached again. I'm okay with the proposal of the facade existing and their approach to restore it. In terms of the rear facade, much of it will be removed. However, in the proposal, all the window openings would be new, and again, you're either going to do it the whole way, or it doesn't seem to make sense to try to retain pieces of that, considering the extent of rebuilding on the rest of the site. Okay, so in terms of the addition, my impression from the presentation is that, and looking at the existing building in context, is that the addition is a bit large in bulk. It does seem rather gratuitous, considering that half of the, big portion of the volume is in fact an open terrace, and that is adding to its height. The designer is obviously very skilled and sophisticated. I would ask that they make another pass at trying to reduce the bulk of it. The aesthetics and the design and the detailing, I think, are wonderful. I like it. I think it's very handsome, contemporary, but respectful to the basic modular quality of the building facade below, but I do think it could be reduced. The floor-tofloors are 11 feet, which are very generous. I think they could come down a little bit, and I think some approach to reduce the height of the mechanical unit would be appreciated greatly in the overall massing of the proposal. Sir, am I missing?
I think the excavation.
Yes, the excavation, again, I'm having to put my trust in the skilled consultants here. My question previously, benching is always another approach to dealing with party wall issues. Because of the extent of the rest of the foundation work, I'm not going to nitpick that one point. I'm going to trust the skilled team on this and say it's appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Letfy?
Yes, I think I'm in agreement with a lot of what Commissioner Chu said. This is, actually, this is a very exciting project, just because there's going to be this wonderful restoration of this facade, beautiful building, an important one in the district, and when it's done, I mean, it's going to look great. I support a lot of things about this project. First, the removal of the fire escape. There's, not only is it causing damage, but there's nothing about it that really requires that it stay there in terms of its decorative design. It's just very, very simple. I am, the applicant said that they were going to look to the building at 165 in terms of the cornice, and that seems to make sense to me. I certainly think that the applicant, and the applicant's consultants, who, as Commissioner Chu said, are all very skilled and accomplished, as they described the whole process of remove, how they were going to restore this facade, you know, and why it made sense to remove it as opposed to do it in place, I can appreciate what they're doing, and I'm in agreement with it. I'm okay with, happy that on the facade, the wood windows will be replaced. I am okay with the work on the rear elevation. Sounds like the work is, to replace the whole thing makes sense, and it, of course, is designed in a way that's going to provide the light and air that's necessary for residential use. I too thought the paint color looked a little dark, might be original, but I agree that it makes sense to take another look at it. I happen to think that, you know, there needs to be really a reduction in height on the addition on the top, and that the applicant should look at that, although the design is very elegant and appropriate and works well with the building. And the excavation work seems like it's going to be undertaken in a good way, and there will also be DOB, and LPC is hiring a consultant, so I feel confident in terms of that. Is there any, oh, and this is, we have no control over it, but I'm glad to hear that at least 50% of this facade is going to be for commercial use. It would be wonderful if it is an active retail use, because that's very important to the, to the life of this neighborhood and this street, and it is typical of what goes on here. So, I would like to encourage the applicant to seriously look at that and consider it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree mostly with Commissioner Chu's comments, and I don't have much more to add.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I also agree with what Stephen was saying. I do think that the rooftop addition is one story too tall, so I would suggest that they figure out ways to reduce the visibility of the rooftop addition. You know, we try to balance and perfection, you know, perfection being, you never see anything from anywhere, but clearly, that's not a standard that we stick with rigidly, and I think, in my thinking about how we arrive at those decisions, it has to do with the balance between what we perceive as a reasonable request to expand the building for whatever need is being proposed to us, whether it's adaptive reuse, or, you know, some other modification to the building's use that would require an addition. And here, I just, the case is not made to me that this volume is required for a compelling reason, so merely the fact that it's beautiful and the fact that it's nicely detailed, for me, doesn't get over that hump. When we bust the chops of people who own townhouses, who want to put a bulkhead on their roof to get up there, to make it as minimally visible as possible, I think that we should hold this to the same standard. And I, in terms of the retail thing, it's very ironic in a way, you know? The retail presence, you know, the notion of SoHo as a retail district is relatively new, you know? It used to be warehouses and factories, and storefronts were not places that normal folks hung out, and it was not a retail district, and now it's synonymous with the retail district. So, the fact that it will be a quiet, probably unoccupied facade, or minimally occupied facade, I'm sad about it from the perspective of street activity. It's beyond our control, but I think that it's kind of interesting and ironic, and a little bit sad, but it's not within our...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think the one distinction I would make here on the sort of comparison to a row house is, I think that this is a historic district where we've approved a lot of two-story rooftop additions, and so I do think that the context could be considered in evaluating how much of it you see, and I also just caution focusing a lot on need, because I think it is our first instinct, do you really need this? But at the end of the day, I think if we, if this were a use where, or was required in some way, and we found it to be appropriate by virtue of its architecture, size, scale, and materials, I think it's a little bit tricky to say it's not appropriate, that same architecture is not appropriate, just because it's not required. So, I think it is a little bit of a balance, but I think we just have to be careful with need when we think about these.
I hear you. It's an interesting question. I mean, clearly, we, it does enter into the conversation, though, you know? We have many times referenced adaptive reuse, for instance, which we just did the other day, or this morning, as being of an excuse or a validation of a modification that might be greater than we would otherwise deem appropriate. So, I think it's, you know, it's, I hear you.
Yeah, it is.
And I also remember in the SoHo, the two SoHo rooftop additions that I remember, were the curved one and the one with the very zigzaggy profile, they went to great extents to prove that even though it's two stories, it's not visible.
Yeah, minimally visible, yeah. I think we have approved like this kind of visibility, but this has the long views through Silver Towers, I think, where you see more of it. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, first of all, I want to congratulate the applicant, because they've clearly have a very detailed plan in terms of restoring this building, which is not in good condition, and it's wonderful to see the resources and the careful planning that's being put into this building, because it's going to be gorgeous afterwards. So, let me go through each component. Number one, the fire escape, yes. I think that removing the fire escape is appropriate to the restoration of the cast iron components, to disassemble and reassemble them, and it is appropriate, and I think that they've made a compelling case as to why that needs to be done all at once. The new rear facade is fine, and it's not visible from a public thoroughfare, and it sounds like that is also something that's necessary. And then also the excavation of the cellar, it sounds like they have a plan that they're going to be very careful, so I think that's fine. The part that I don't think, I may be in the minority, is the rooftop addition, the penthouse. I think that the style is appropriate, and I've looked very carefully at the visibility studies, and even though it's slightly visible, I just don't find that it really sticks out. It almost looks as if it belongs in the oblique angles. It really doesn't, I don't find it obtrusive, so I can find it, even though it does seem high, I can find it appropriate.
Yeah, I know, and I tend to think that some of these views are very comparable to other things that we've approved, but I think we are a small group today, and I know we have at least one of our six commissioners who is, I think, really uncomfortable. know we have at least one of our six commissioners who is, I think, really uncomfortable with the amount of visibility. So I think we will, I mean, if we have one option of working it out with staff, but I don't know that Commissioner Goldblum, you're going to be comfortable with that. So I think, given the the quorum today, I think what we'll do is we'll take no action, and we'll ask you to look at that visibility a little bit more, and think about like what the the vantage points where it is most visible, or perhaps inconsistent with other rooftop additions, and think about where you can make those adjustments to reduce the visibility. And and I think, you know, the color is based on the paint analysis, and I think it's hard to say that's inappropriate, but we've heard a couple of comments about the tonality of it. So that's something you could think about as well. So we'll take no action today, and we'll have you back as soon as you're ready to just focus on that, those two parts. Okay, thank you. And so we will now break for lunch, Commissioners. We are, it's 1:49. We will come back at 2:20. We are behind schedule, so we'll resume as quickly as we can. And we'll ask all members of the public to exit the hearing room at this time, and all members of the public on the.